There's been many changes, both on the revenue picture. There's been new proposals put out by the administration in regards to fees, as well as there have been changes to the bill as a result of amendments. What we have today is, again, a presentation by the administration based on the changes that have occurred and also the recommendations by the administration. I'm going to allow, and this is where I'm going to, if you, the body could bear with me, please. I want to allow the administration the opportunity to fully explain their, make their statements, give a full explanation of their proposals, and then after, after they've been through with their presentation, I will allow, of course, for comments, as well as any proposed amendments or deletions. I've been advised by the clerk that we will have an engrossed, draft engrossed bill in about another hour to hour and a half. So, after the presentation, I would like to allow for a lunch break, and when we get back, then you guys, you folks will have the engrossed bill in front of you, and at the same time, you will be allowed all, any questions or comments to the representatives of the administration. And with that, I'd like to, again, introduce Mr. John De La Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll bear with us, what you have before you are two spreadsheets. One is titled Schedule V, it's FY 2007 revenues, and the second one is titled Schedule I, Bill 74 markup. I know it's going to, it's kind of difficult to follow with what's going to be on the spreadsheets without a bill in front of us to reference, but so many changes have, so many changes have been made to the original version of the bill that, as the vice speaker said, that I think it's helpful to wait for the engrossed version. But if, if I can walk you through the two spreadsheets, and in the best way I can, explain without reference, without a bill to reference, how we've tracked the changes that have occurred throughout the session process. The first, on the FY 2007 revenue sheet, if you look at the far right-hand side of the page, the final three columns are titled Gov's Bill, Adjusted Committee of the Whole, and Revised. The revenue numbers that we're referencing for the adjustments and appropriations that I'll explain after this are on the Revised column. And as you can see, if you go to the Total Income Tax, the Total Income Tax number has been adjusted downward based on the move to restore the provisions for refunds that were in the original 28-149. And then, we also reduced the GRT downward by 12 million based on the rejection of the 1% proposal. And then, we removed the Real Property Amnesty from the General Fund as, that also has been corrected to be placed in the Territorial Education Facilities Fund. And so, what we have is a final on the revenues, based on what has occurred during the Committee of the Whole, is $453,733,719. What we then did was take the estimates for the Real Property, which by amendment, we're hoping will be appropriated back into the General Fund, the Dave Santas, as discussed on the floor, and the other fees that were discussed, as well as two amendments made by Senator Pangolinan. So, if you'll look below the $453 million number, those are the estimates that we have calculated into what will then end up at a $468,846,347 revenue estimate for, based on the changes that were made during this Committee of the Whole. Should I just go to the expenditures now? Okay. Then if you turn to Schedule I, Bill 74 markup, what we then needed to do was, based on that revenue level, adjust the appropriation side of the budget as well. And so, we went back to each of the agencies' operating budgets and adjusted back up to what was the original, not the 2.5 that's reflected in the Budget Bill, but what the original, original operating budgets would have been with the 2.5 restored. Then, applied the deappropriation law at 5% to it. If you look down towards the bottom of the sheet, there's a, there's a cell labeled BBMR's 5% deappropriation per Public Law 28-150 as amended by Bill 74. The total deappropriation would be $19,806,1. So, rather than reflecting it in what is the itemized appropriations, we just took it off the bottom line because, this is where it kind of gets tricky for me to explain. Because the appropriations that would be reflected if this, in fact, passes into law, if we calculate the 5% into it, we would then take another 5% off of it by the, by the deappropriation law. So, we had to restore back the appropriation level in order for us to apply the deappropriation law. And then, what we ended up with, after we took the deappropriation measure, was a, what amounted to about a $4.9 million shortfall. We took 3.1 million of that shortfall, distributed it in a prorated fashion through the operating budgets of the agencies. However, for GPSS, we only took half a million of what was supposed to be a $900,000 cut, and then distributed the $400,000 back into the other agencies as well. Which left us with a shortfall after those two exercises of 1.8 million. The deappropriation to the special funds for the non-reporting as well amounted to somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.2 million. So, we also have an amendment to proffer that would appropriate back into the General Fund 1.8 million of that to balance the appropriation side. I know that's kind of confusing, and I apologize.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. De La Rosa. Senator Ben Pangolinan?
Yes, is there any reason why you didn't do that, you know, that kind of spreadsheet, similar to the front spreadsheet here? Where you showed the original appropriation, Bill 74 markup, revised Bill 74 based upon 5%, and just exactly what you said, but put it down in paper, redistribution of the shortfall and so forth, so that, because there were agencies that were not subject to the 5% deappropriation, correct?
You know, according to our discussions with BBMR and OFB, every agency violated some provision of it. So, the 5% would apply.
That's not what the report from the public auditor, is that the report, based upon the report from the public auditor?
I believe, and we'll verify this, but subsequent corrections to that report have come out.
Did we see that, subsequent corrections?
I have not seen it. This was based on our discussions with BBMR and OFB, but I can verify that.
Did BBMR get a correction from the public auditor? Is that where, can we get a copy of that? I mean, just so that we know?
Sure.
I mean, so that we have that information? Because if I look at the Bill 74 markup, that's a little, that, the Bill 74 markup, just to, if I followed you correctly, for example, at the administration of 8.06, that is from the original appropriation of 29, 28-150 minus 5%? No?
No. If you go back to the original Bill 74, the appropriation level assigned to, to the Department of Administration at that time was what was their operating needs less 2.5%?
No. The original appropriation was what was loaded into the computer? What you loaded in onto your AS400 as the allocation, because it was a-
Less 2.5% of that.
Less 2.5% already?
What was reflected in the original Bill 74 had the reduction of 2.5% in it.
Right, but that's not the markup bill. You know what I mean? It's just a little confused.
You need the interim.
Yeah, the interim.
Sure, we can, we can do that. What, and I apologize, we didn't provide a million columns of numbers.
No, you need the same kind of columns here, not a million. You only need, you know, the same as this.
Four columns of numbers.
Right.
The reason that we did this was because this was going to be, the discussion was to happen in tandem with the amendment, but we're also waiting for the engrossed version so that we can correct based on what those levels are now.
Yeah.
But we'll provide those numbers for you.
Yeah, I just think it'll be much, much more helpful.
Okay.
And would facilitate and accelerate the discussion. Senator Shippins, he recognized?
This is a very simple way of putting something so voluminous, and it's very helpful to me. One of the things that I wanted to look at is how the amount that would impact should I, my amendment? I'm still, you know, debating on the amendment to amend the Dave Santas to raise the small business, you know, definition in terms of the trestle from $50,000 to $150,000, and then bringing back the exemption back to $50,000. These numbers were crunched, you know, before that thought came in. So, I did ask on a sidebar to find out what would that, how would that impact your balanced budget? And I look here, that the Dave Santas, the total Dave Santas is 2.3 million, right? That you're going to bring in? I may have heard wrong, because I have an hearing infection, but I thought it was outside, it was 7 million of the Dave Santas as amended, but it looks like it's 2.3 only.
The 2.3 is reflective of what's remaining for this year. What we talked about outside was annualized, the total annual.
Okay, so what would that be for the remaining of this year? I wasn't, for the remainder? That would definitely reduce that 2.3.
Then we, that number would have to be adjusted by John's quick calculation to about 1.3 rather than 2.3.
You'd be, so we would, it would bring the, the, this would make it an unbalanced budget by $1 million. You know, we're just talking general figures now. It, it's almost like a 50% impact for the remainder of the year, right?
A little less than that, yes, sir.
So, that, that, the amount, because I spoke with the good chair and says, find out what the numbers and how it would impact. So, it's not the 3 million as I was told, that was for the whole 12 months. This is for the remainder up to September 30th, and you're saying that it would impact, you know, John, by an additional 1 million?
If you were to drop the trestle amount from 500 to 150,000 and raise the exemption from 40 to 50,000, we did some computation, and it's going to run from 3 to 4 million if you drop it down and raise it up again. So, drop down the trestle from 500 to 150, and then, I guess, restore the original 50,000 exemption rather than 40,000.
So, that would, what was the final guesstimate for the remainder of the fiscal year? You're saying it's a 50%?
If you take the 4 million and you multiply that times 1/3, it's going to give you about 1.3 million dollars.
But we only have 2.3 here.
No, that's, that's if you, if you were to bring in the trestle down to 50,000 and bring the 50,000 exemption down to 40,000, that would, that would probably go from anything between 5 to 7 million dollars.
Yeah, but I'm talking about for the remainder of the year.
Yes, because if you were to make this law effective May 1st, you would have four, four filing of new exemptions.
Right, but that would be for the four months.
Right, four months.
Only on that four months, so it would impact it by half of what you're projecting here now?
No, 1/3.
1/3 of that, so 1/3 of 2.3, what is it that you have? What's 1/3 of 2.3?
That 2.3 already is 1/3 of 7 million dollars.
Oh, based on the original amendment of 50, yeah. But now, if, I'm asking, what would be the fiscal impact on, on a potential proposal that might be made by me to, and, and, you know, you already know, raising up the trestle and increasing? I just want to know, how, 2.3 million dollars, how much would it reduce it now?
Oh, from 2.
It's 2.3. And that, that amended now?
It'd be a $1 million decrease.
Quando?
1 million.
$1 million to uno. Por cien, es en el budget, 1.3, you know, John? If we implement that, or if it ever, if it passed, then it would, your number here would have to be adjusted on the Dave Santas to 1.33333.
Right.
And, and that 1 million is 1/3 of that amount?
No, no, Senator, 1 million would be calculated, it's what's remaining in the year, calculated for the total annualized projected collections on the Dave Santas. At the, at the, as it stands now, the adjustment to Dave Santas, we projected collecting 7 million. Based on your proposal, the annual collections would shrink to 4 million. So, the calculation John has just provided, the 1.3, is based on the 4 million.
The 4 million of the annual, so 1/3 of that, that's what you're saying? So, you'll go down, so the impact, the fiscal impact is an additional million dollars that would not be projected to come in?
That's correct.
Right?
For this year, for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, because, you know, one of the things that makes me start thinking is that when we start hurting small business, you know, the small businesses are really the cornerstone of the larger economy, all aggregate, all put together. And my concern here is that if we do this and we hurt them and they go out of business, then your projection here will not hold. If those businesses are, have to fold up, you know, and then they have to lay people. I hear from, from what I read and people coming to me, is that, you know, what, what good is it, you know, to kill the little goose? The lace, the little goading egg that comes in? For the, for, for it will be the larger goose that will still hurt, but will not necessarily fold up? You know, have you, in, in, with your economists within this government maybe looked at that in terms of, is there a potential that the amendment might? Or, to what extent would the amendment, as it is today, impact on the small business? Because right now, we're really looking in the government to get revenues in, to have a balanced budget. But at the same time, I need to look in terms of, how would this impact those small businesses who would no longer be able to avail themselves to at least a lower level trestle versus that of the half a million? And then maybe we've gone to the, to the furthest end of the spectrum to be able to, how do I say this poetically? Squeeze the small business so that we can balance our budget? And then that's, that's a moral thing for me to do, looking at terms of how we pass legislation. But it has to be in terms of, I already know now you're saying, a million dollars will create another million dollar shortfall, right? Another thing is that, I don't know the answer, but I think if we have the Department of Commerce that's under the purview of the executive branch, or the economies up there, look at how that would impact, what is the, what do they see as, as the potentials of truly hurting the small business thereby having a rippling effect across the economic stream of smaller business? That they have to fold up? After paying all their overhead, after paying all of their employees, after paying for the goods and that to provide the services? You know, I am saying that I think we need to look at that, and I, and I would hope that, that you folks maybe look into that and come back and let us know that, you know, there is a real potential that we're going to lose small business. There are going to be casualties out there. There are going to be casualties out there, and not only in the terms of the small business, but the people that depend on the small business. So, I am going to ask, John, if maybe you can find out, how does this actually impact? Because we get it from all sides. But I think there are ways to look in terms of the numbers, and maybe saying, if we pass this, as is the amendment on the Dave Santas, there are going to be casualties, and I want to, would like to know what the casualties are. And before I really also go in and introduce that, and I might also be creating, but I want to look at whatever we do in this part, Mr. Chairman, is that we don't hurt and maybe, you know, cut our face, nose to spite ourselves, but, because small businesses are really the cornerstones. And, John, I know you, you, we've talked about this, and, and, and you're a good man, so I don't think it's very difficult to call the economists to start giving you an idea. If we pass this, what is the casualty rate? What is the potential casualty rate? Maybe even get the University of Guam, the Small Business Development, what would be the casualty rate? If there's not going to be any casualty rate as a result of this, then I would probably have to reserve my thinking in terms of increasing the trestle. But I need that information, Mr. Chair, and I'm making that an official request if it's appropriate and if it's okay with you. If not, I'll rule myself out of order. Thank, John, do you have any comment?
Yes, Senator, we'll do our best to try and get that answer for you as quickly as possible.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Senator Shippins. Senator Rispichel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to say that, first, I'm grateful that you're giving us some time to digest this presentation by the administration. But in a cursory view, it appears to me, I just wanted to ask, take, for example, the administration, Department of Administration, their Bill 74 makeup at a 5% deappropriation, it's 8,63,672. But in the 2.5% scenario, it's 7,945,742. And then, Ancestral Lands Commission, 191,822. And then a 2.5% scenario is 189,16. In some cases, it doesn't look like it's a 5% deappropriation. Department of the BBMR had a 5% deappropriation, it's 1,335,460. At the 2.5% scenario, it was 1,315,926, so-
Senator, I apologize if I wasn't clear. I know it's kind of difficult to explain it without reference to the bill itself or the bill-
No, I understand what you did. You took out the 2.5% deappropriation.
Restored the level and then spread a reduction of about 3.1 million through the agencies prorated based on their percentage of the General Fund. What you have at the bottom, the 19 million, is a reflection of the deappropriation amount. It's, it was not factored into each of the individual numbers simply because we have amendments to proffer that will change the appropriation levels in the bill. And so, they reflect what the appropriation level will be without the deappropriation, because that's an administrative function.
So, how did you absorb, how do you proportionate resort, to absorb, rather, a 19 million dollar deappropriation?
Every agency takes their 5%, that's the way the law is written.
Yeah, so if, so my question is, if every agency is going to take their 5%, and then there's still a 3.1% balance, which is spread out over all the departments and agencies except GPSS, the 5% scenario versus the 2.5% scenario that was originally presented to us?
The, the, actually, like, take Department of Administration, for example. What would, what they would end up having to operate on for the year would be this 8,63,692 less 5%. We have not taken it out of the itemized appropriation.
Oh, you have not taken, so then-
Simply because what this number that's in this spreadsheet reflects is what would be the amended appropriation level in the bill. If we reflected the deappropriation in the, in the bill, we would then have to take 5% off what the appropriation level becomes.
This 8 million, then, is their appropriation level for 2007?
We've, with the 3.1 million cut prorated into the agencies as well.
So, how are you going to absorb the 19 million dollars?
Every agency will take its 5%.
So, then there'll be another column, which will be 5% from this 8,63 number?
The former speaker had asked us to provide different, the different columns to show what those impacts would be, and we will provide that. What we intended to do with this was to reflect what, based on everything that's happened.
No, but based on the spreadsheet now, and I'm not trying to nitpick, because that's never been my style, but based on this presentation now, you're showing it's a balanced budget, or the net is zero, but then it doesn't really reflect what else needs to be done to get to that zero mark? Because-
At the bottom, after you go through the line, the itemized agency appropriation levels in bold?
Yeah, that's the 19 million, but then it would, but if we really, if you really were to present a true landscape of Bill 74, you would really have had another column which shows what those deappropriation levels would mean to all these individual agencies.
We will, we will provide the numbers for you.
And I, and I could do that myself, that's not my point. My point also is, Mr. Chairman, we spent several weeks calling in agencies, one after the other, asking them what a 2.5% impact would mean to their department agency. Does this now mean that we have to go through that entire process again to ask what a 5% deappropriation would mean? Or are we simply just going to say, have the deappropriations pursuant to the current law, have they already occurred?
I can confirm, I believe they were supposed to occur this week, either yesterday or the day before.
And are all the agencies, I know that the, the, one of the reports that the public auditor came out with, it kind of showed that the judiciary complied, but then there was also a section in the report that said, if you really, really want to follow the letter of the law, then all of the agencies at, at one point or another have not complied. Have you informed the judiciary that their, the Bill 74 markup is 19.9 million? However, their '07 level is 20.1 million dollars? I mean, have they been notified? That they were not compliant?
I believe that the deappropriation notices have gone out to the agencies and branches.
Is the administration also going to present to the legislature a very honest assessment of what this deappropriation would mean to the various departments and agencies?
I'm not sure what that-
Are you going to, are you going to present to the legislature in this Committee of the Whole what a 5% impact would mean, deappropriation of 5%, what that would mean to the departments of agencies?
Agency by agency? If that's what the body desires, we can walk through the different agency levels and-
I don't think it's only what the body desires, but I think it's what the people of Guam expect.
Sure. Senator, we're just, the deappropriation law, we're just complying. It's only a factor of the appropriation levels while we're in session. Had we not been in session, we would have had to apply that anyway, so.
No, but the, the agency that's supposed to-
But yes, we can, we can show you the impact of the 5% on an agency basis.
No, no, but the agency that's supposed to, to make the deappropriation happen is the same, very same agency that's been excused from this budget process from time to time, and that's BBMR. So, BBMR hasn't been here, but- So BBMR hasn't been here, but you just said that had we not been in session, we would have been able to make those deappropriation happen.
No, I was just clarifying that the deappropriation is not an, is not an an object of this budget proposal. It's what we have to do based on the non-compliance. But we will, I, we will provide you an agency by agency impact of what the 5% will do. That's what you're asking for.
And we would get that when we reconvene?
Yeah, we'll work on it and get that to you.
Because earlier you said that you, the administration would rather take a 5% over a 15%. And then when I moved an amendment to prevent the governor from transferring money into those non-compliant agencies, there was big objections about that from both the administration and members of the legislature. I mean, are you going to follow the mandate or not? And when I say are you going to follow it, are you, are you going to really, really follow it by way of not allowing monies to go back into these agencies that didn't comply?
You, you mean after the 5% deappropriation is done, are we not going to then transfer money in to support the needs of the agency?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? No, that is not, we will likely have to transfer money in.
So essentially, this is why some members of the legislature, including myself, have argued the impracticability of implementing this 5% deappropriation. You're looking at absorbing a $19 million cut and absent any appropriation by the legislature to restore these fundings, is it enough within the governor's authority, transfer authority, to keep the current operations of the government of Guam, including personnel? I mean, assuming that we, this government collects $30 million in the next five months, assuming that the $12 million fee increases occurs, assuming that all these scenarios happen? If, if, if you, if you're going to be transferring money back into these agencies, then we really wouldn't realize a $19 million reduction in spending?
We would, because we would only be able to transfer within the authorized appropriation levels anyway. We would only be able to transfer within the 468 million. We wouldn't be able to transfer above that.
Correct.
So we would be realizing the $19 million savings. The movement of the resources will have to stay within that ceiling. So we will be realizing the savings.
And so are you prepared to tell the legislature, honestly, John, what that impact would mean to the government departments and agencies, including impacts to personnel?
Sure. I, Senator, we will provide you that information when we, we'll work on those numbers and compiling what this former speaker had asked as well. Yes, we'll walk you through that.
Have you also been in contact with GPSS? Because they're also asking the legislature to reinstate their, their deappropriation. I mean, that's an $8 million impact, so if you
Yes, it is.
were to transfer money into GPSS, then certainly some of the other agencies will suffer as a result.
Yes.
So when we come back, you would be prepared to let us know exactly what that impact would be?
Yes, we'll, we'll show you what the numbers will show and against what personnel requirements are and operating.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Respechel. Senator Luhan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Morning, gentlemen, ma'am. John, can you, when did the amnesty program start and when does it end again? Your tax amnesty?
For the, the real property, I believe it started on, on March 12. And I believe it's for four months.
Okay, so the expiration date of that amnesty is when?
Probably in July.
July, when in July?
July 12.
July 12, okay.
I mean, sorry, March, April, May, June, yeah, July 12.
July 12, that's for real property?
Right.
And for the individual and corporate?
It's for three months and it started, I mean, it ends on June 26, so we retract that, the May, April, it started in March 26.
March, March?
March 26.
March 26, and...
And will end on June 26.
June 26. Okay. So obviously, a rev and tax tracks this on a daily basis, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, can you provide this body with your, you know, I'm sure you won't be able to provide for today's tracking, but up to maybe end of yesterday, yesterday, workday yesterday in your tracking for real property, individual and corporate?
I, I believe for, for real property, we, for, for tax years, 2005 and prior years, I think we collected about $300,000.
From, from your...
From, for the real property.
Real property, from March 12 to, to yes?
To about April 20, I think.
April 20, okay. $300,000?
Yeah, $300,000.
Okay, and your individual and corporate?
For all others, which be income tax, GRT and withholding.
Yeah.
Corporate, I, I believe we, as of yesterday or the other day, I believe Wednesday was 343,000.
343,000?
Yes.
We're still, I mean, we're not even a million, right, in, in the combination of both? We're, we're, we're little over a half a million dollars.
The, for the amnesty and the income tax and the GRT, we believe next month and June will pick up because a lot of people now are gearing up for the deadline, which is June 26.
Sure, sure.
So I, we hear a lot of taxpayers trying to gear up to get that kind of money to try and pay in to the government.
Okay. Okay, so, so you, you, you're foreseeing that when, when will be, when, when you think that they're going to rush in and, and sign their checks over?
It'll be June, the last week, I guess towards June 20, June 26.
So the very last minute?
Yes.
Okay. But, but based on, okay, I mean, and if that's the case, I, I, you know, I mean, as was most, most people, file their taxes the very last day. The, the good amount of us folks file the very last day. But based on the tracking, and if you were tracking and then in, in regards to not sending their, I mean, paying the very last day, based on the tracking, tracking doesn't show, doesn't, doesn't reveal that we're going to get close to our, our, our projected amount of, of the amnesty, right? Based, based on the tracking. But again, as you said, people come in with their checks in the very last couple of days to, to...
Yeah.
To, okay. Okay, so based on tracking, you're probably, okay. How much do you foresee then to, in the last couple of days, based on tracking? If you're tracking continuously like this, and then your last couple of days, how much do you project to come in?
I, I believe the way we, we, we projected it is, is the, the first, first month of the 90 days is, the rate is going to be very low.
Okay.
And I think the last week of, of the amnesty, we've, we've just been collecting about 60% of that.
60% of that?
60%, yes.
Okay. Do you, are you still, are you still optimistic? Or can you say that we're still a little bit over optimistic that...
We're meeting a lot of taxpayers out there and, and some, some taxpayers are coming up. They, they ask like 600 grand that they're looking into paying off through amnesty and those decent people are coming up to us and, 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 and what we're, we're doing is every, every taxpayer that owes taxes out there probably have received a letter from us informing them of the tax amnesty. And this is something that we didn't do last time, but for the short period of time, we, we decided to try and give everybody notice. And actually, on the notice, you would tell them how much taxes they owe and what the interest and penalty amounts are, and if they take advantage of it, how much they can save. So it's, it's like an incentive for them.
Okay. The last time we had a tax amnesty, were you tracking kind of the same? And then how much of the projected revenue you, did you think you were going to bring in over that amnesty program? So how much did you bring in versus your projection?
On the last amnesty, it, it's for a longer period of time. I, I believe we, we collected about $28 million, twenty, it was 28 million?
Collected 28 million over the project, over the, the time period?
But it was for a, a longer period of time.
Longer period of time, okay.
I think for six months.
Six months. And the projected, the projected revenue bring-in at the time was, at the time?
I, I didn't, I, I can't recall.
Okay, okay. Okay, but did, did you come pretty close to that projection?
I believe so. We, we looked also at the rate, what were the receivable back then and the receivable now.
Okay.
And we, we were comparing the, the goal that we're trying to meet this year and the goal back then, and the rates were comparable. In other words, the collection based on receivables.
Yeah, and the, the reason why I'm asking this, because we don't come close to, I mean, based on tracking, I mean, based to, to, to date on tracking. And again, hopefully you, you prove us wrong in, in, in the tracking that the people, the folks who come in the last couple of days and, and pay up and then will meet the goal of, what is it, projected amnesty to bring in 30 million? Something like that? Something like that, right?
Right.
Pretty close. Because, you know, if, if, if we don't meet that, that makes a big difference in the projected numbers of, of the revenue. Okay, but no problem. One other thing, John, correct me if, if I'm wrong in this thing, but I don't think I am. But the, in the spreadsheet, in the Schedule V, I assume that all fee increases have been included in this to come up with the projection?
Yes.
That's inclusive of the amnesty and all that, right?
Yes.
So all that has been...
Yeah, the amnesty is actually built into the top part of the...
No, absolutely. So all that is factored in as well as the fee increases and...
As addressed on the floor, yes.
As, as addressed on the floor. Okay, so all those have been factored in to give us this, this number, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Luhan. Senator Guthertz?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, colleagues, and to our administrative representatives. John, in looking at these figures now, assuming there are no other changes that occur, what will be this, the impact of this budget on personnel in the government of Guam? If this were to be approved, would you foresee the need to furlough, layoff, terminate any government employees, classified or unclassified?
Given the provisions, Senator, that are in the current version of Bill 74, just from our following of the procedures, the proceedings, there is not enough flexibility within this budget not to affect agencies, even to the personnel level. What we have exercised here was given what is the revenue level addressed by the body, the existing deappropriation law, and the need to balance this budget. The appropriation levels have been adjusted to balance it. But there are agencies, and we've spoken about this when we were doing the appropriation discussions earlier, like the Guam Fire Department, whose general fund appropriations, 98% of it funds personnel. So clearly, there will be agencies without flexibility to move the money around that will have to take some action on the personnel side.
So with this as presented at this time, with no additional changes to it, despite the proposed increase in fees, the 5% adjustment, and other actions that have been taken to date with the bill, there still will be a need to deal with potential furloughs and/or layoffs and/or terminations of employees in some parts of the government of Guam under the executive branch. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying without the adequate flexibility to move the money around to augment those shortfalls, if we left GFD to stand alone, even a, 98% of their budget funds their personnel.
Could you please define flexibility from the perspective of the administration?
Transfer authority for the governor, if agreeable to the body broader than it is right now.
And what is it right now, Mr. Delarosa?
It's limited in the number of agencies you can transfer within. It exempts certain agencies.
And what would you require for flexibility? What percentage of transfer authority should the governor have?
You know, we, we would run those numbers, but, and I, I can get that specifically back to you. But what, the challenge we face, and this is not to pick on any agencies or anything, but some of the larger users of the general fund are exempted from that authority. And so as you take away that flexibility from some of the larger appropriations and your pool gets that small, then even full transfer authority within 15% of what's appropriated doesn't give you a whole lot of room. So if we broadened that flexibility, it allows us to manage the, the money a little better.
Now, I, I believe you're speaking of the Guam Public School System, correct?
Among others, yes.
In looking at the Guam Public School System, if the governor was given transfer authority that would also allow him to deal with monies that are identified for the Guam Public School System, and should he determine there's a need to use some of those monies elsewhere, don't you think that would have a dramatic negative impact on the school system?
You know, Senator, I don't believe the governor would transfer money out that would affect their operations significantly. In a, in a prior conversation, in a prior meeting with the Guam Public School System, their CFO said that they were projecting to lapse somewhere around 10 million in vacancies.
10 million in vacancies?
This was a couple of months ago, but I don't know what that number would be. But if they were lapsing in vacancies for unfilled positions, that would be someplace that we could use. But we wouldn't obviously take anything that would affect their operational needs any more than they're already struggling through.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm very concerned because I think what I'm seeing, and I, first I want to thank Mr. Delarosa and the administration representatives. I know they've been working very hard to reconcile the numbers and to bring this to us today, and to try to bring us down to a zero deficit for this year's budget. But I, something tells me, based on my instincts and the conversation that I just initiated with Mr. Delarosa, that this zero deficit may in fact be a zero on paper. But the reality is, we're still going to see the cash shortfalls despite fee increases, despite the 5% cuts in agencies, and that this in fact may not solve the problem that we've been working on for eight weeks. I can understand the need of the governor to have transfer authority, but I, I'm not certain, nor do I feel secure, that even with the transfer authority, that this cash flow issue in the government of Guam will be solved. And I'm very, very worried about this, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to hear from Mr. Delarosa. Beyond the governor's request, or I'm sure you'll be requesting, transfer authority, what else does he desire to deal with this circumstance?
You know, Senator, when, when Bill 74 first came down, it was, there were things proposed in it, like an increase, a temporary increase in the GRT that would help us increase our revenue base and would allow us to... would help us, uh, increase our revenue base and would allow us to, um, perhaps provide some capital financing to address the cash flow issues. Outside of increasing the revenue side of this, which, uh, as reflected here is what has been determined is, at least at this point, acceptable, um, all we can do is work on the appropriation side to make sure that we balance it. Flexibility to manage the resources is about all that we have available to us. I think that if there was, um, broader authority to manage the cash dispersments, that would ease cash flow as well. And, um, that I think that's the extent of it, given what has occurred to date in this bill, is the management ability, some restoration of management ability to the governor in order to live within the realities of what revenues we project to come in.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, with these, uh, statements from Mr. Delarosa on behalf of the administration, and with the concern that I just expressed, uh, later in our committee of the whole session, at some point, I will be bringing forth approximately seven amendments that will be intended to further help control expenditures internally within the government of Guam, so that the, uh, governor may be able to deal better with, uh, the continued, uh, issues that were just discussed, the cash flow issues. These seven amendments, I believe, will bring discipline within the departments and agencies of the government without impacting personnel, but will further cut costs through prudent management techniques that up to this point are not yet reflected in the managerial actions of directors and in the managerial actions at the governor's office. So I will offer those a little bit later. Thank you, Mr. Delarosa.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Guthertz. You know what we'll do, it's twelve twenty, and I know you folks are, are awaiting the, um, the, the, the draft engrossed, uh, copy of Bill Number Seventy-Four, and I also want to allow you have the lunch and then an opportunity to, to go over some of the numbers. And also the administration, again, there's been several requests from, um, the members of the body, allowing them the time to, to again, get the necessary, uh, information available. So we're going to take a lunch break recess until, uh, two o'clock. Yes. Senator Shimizu? Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I beg your indulgence. Just one quick question, um, John, I looked at the, um, the spreadsheet, and you know, uh, from time to time, the, the, the people that came in to testify, they talked about the government, you know, taking, uh, um, some cuts, you know, streamlining. And, and in your proposal that you have here, there's that nineteen million, close to twenty million dollar cut, right? That's basically, so I just wanted to, to, to say that, um, from all the, um, you know, especially yesterday, you know, cut the employees, furlough them, because the private sector would take qualified and all of that, so just to find out, that's where you're talking in terms of where the government is, is, is cutting by almost close to twenty million dollars in this proposed, uh, mini-budget.
It actually amounts to about, um, twenty-two million dollars.
Twenty-two million dollars?
It's this nineteen plus the three point one that we...
Right, I just wanted to, 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 to reflect that, because I, I, I hear the citizens of Guam, especially in the business community, saying that this government is bloated, so you're trying to, you know, un-bloat it, if you know English, by twenty-three million dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll take a lunch recess until two o'clock.
Yeah, there are a couple of questions I'd like to ask about, um, about both of these things. First is just as a, as a general principle, uh, I asked OFB to go into the AS four hundred and pull up actual revenues for the first six months. Posted on the AS four hundred currently are only revenues for the first five months actual, and then a bunch of stuff that, um, it's really not decipherable right now for March, but it's posted. And, uh, OFB did contact, um, DOA, and DOA said they had a draft March report, uh, that wasn't ready for dissemination, although we did ask for a copy, uh, but that in general, uh, revenues for March were somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-four million dollars. Looking at the six months cumulatively, it appears that in the first six months, there have been two months that have drastically outperformed last year. March being one of them, uh, having outperformed March of last year by something in excess of seven and a half million dollars. January being spectacular, having outperformed January of last year by in excess of ten million dollars, which presumably means sales in the Christmas season were spectacular, and just sales in general might have been. Then you have a few months where more or less, although it was slightly less than last year, it was only slightly less than last year so far, and then other months, oh, no, except for one, there was one month, I can't remember which one it was off the top of my head, but we, where you, uh, came in at about a million and a half less than last year. And then a couple more months where in one month you pulled in about nine hundred and some thousand dollars more than last year, and another month where you pulled in about four hundred and some thousand dollars. And to make a long story short, based on the first six months of performance, you've pulled in sixteen, about sixteen and a half million dollars more so far this fiscal year than for the same period of time last year. That's pretty significant growth for a six-month period. So my question is, well, let's make a few assumptions. Let's say that for the rest of the year, even though for the first half of the year, the revenues have outperformed last year by sixteen million dollars, let's make an assumption that says that for the rest of the year, it's just going to be completely flat and there'll be no variance at all between last year and this year. Uh, if that would, to be the case, then you'd hit four thirty-four already. If you did no worse than last year, you'd already hit four thirty-four. Is that a reasonable assumption? If you're sixteen million over now, four seventeen was your results last year?
You mean if through the rest of the year?
Yeah.
If we stayed flat, yes. That's a reasonable assumption.
Given the fact, however, that for the, and we understand even in the first six months, there's been peaks and valleys. You know, some months have been more or less the same as last year, some months have been nine hundred thousand dollars better than last year, some months have been ten million plus better than last year. It all, all depends on the month. But understanding those peaks and valleys that have existed in the first six months, when you recognize that, um, in just six months, you've outperformed last year by sixteen and a half million dollars, is, is it really likely that in the second six-month period, there's going to be no growth whatsoever? That there's going to be a complete reversal of a pretty good growth scenario in the first six months, followed by a zero growth scenario in the last six months? Is that a likely scenario? Understanding there'll be good months and bad months, but when you accumulate all those things over the next six months, it's going to be...
There's not likely going to be stagnant revenues, but there will be, uh, one of the things that, um, happened last year that we're cautious about is after March, the projection, we didn't meet projections from that point on, I mean, in a significant way.
Well, that might tell you something about how folks are projecting.
Yes.
But last year was not a great year, right?
Yes.
I just want you guys to think about this. I'm not going to make any motions about this. It just, I, I keep checking because I keep getting curious, and I, I see this growth pattern, and, you know, some of my colleagues are attributing it to, uh, tax amnesties kicking in early. I'm curious, when you start, now that you've started this tax amnesty program, you have tax amnesty as a separate item in the, in the, in the, in the revenue breakdown, is it going to be reported that way as well?
Uh, I, I'm not sure. I can verify with the revenue tax if you guys want to...
Actually, Lou would probably be the person to verify with.
Oh, yeah.
When she reports, is she going to report it as a separate item, the way it's broken out as a separate item here?
We can have her...
Or is it going to be lumped in with other things and thus add to the sense of confusion?
We can report it separated.
Okay. Well, I think that's something that would be worthwhile, uh, looking at. Just, just in general, uh, you guys feel pretty comfortable that the estimates you made with respect to the, uh, the, the assumptions you've made with respect to how much is going to be generated by these fees and such are accurate?
Yeah, we, we worked, uh, we asked the agencies to work the numbers, uh, and be, um, conservative or cautious with not being too optimistic with them.
Currently BBMR's five percent deappropriation per public law twenty-eight-one-five-oh, as amended by Bill Seventy-Four, will result in nineteen million dollars in savings?
Yes, sir.
That, however, will not bring us into balance based upon the revenues and consequently all these other cuts are being recommended. Is that, is that what I understand?
That's correct.
I do have to say, I'm not going to make any amendments at this time since we're just asking questions, but when I look at a five percent operations cut for certain departments, obviously, such as GPSS, and I take five percent of one-seventy-two, that, that kind of sends a chill down my spine. Definitely, I think we're going to have to do something about ensuring that any, uh, any deappropriations come out of just certain parts of GPSS and not others. And while I'm not of the belief that, uh, GPSS can't tighten, you know, I think they can tighten up, uh, in, in a number of places, uh, in terms of central operations, I'm having a real, real hard time seeing how they can cumulatively deal with what looks like, off the top of my head, is going to be in excess of nine million dollars in cuts. I just don't see that happening, so, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that later. I just want to understand basically what we'll be looking at here. One more thing, you know, we've been going around a little bit on this whole notion about whether or not cuts such as these can be sustained without having to affect positions in staffing patterns that are currently occupied by individuals. Earlier, we did receive testimony from one person representing the administration who seemed to think that was possible. The more I look at the numbers, John, and the more I consider, uh, many of the departments and agencies, I'm, I'm, I'm really becoming more and more skeptical of whether that's possible.
Speaker, I did state earlier on the floor, uh, in response, I think to Senator Respicio's question, that, uh, in fact, at the five percent, it would, uh, in several agencies affect personnel.
Yeah. So on the record, could I, could I get, uh, a clear definitive statement that in order to meet, uh, cuts that you are likely going to be required to meet in order for us to balance this budget, that there will have to be personnel adjustments of one form or another?
If the, based on the provisions in the existing budget law that aren't going to change, and this, yes, that is the case.
All right, so if these cuts, whether or not they are precisely distributed in this fashion, but if the cuts are going to be at this level or higher, then you are saying definitely it will affect, uh, positions that are occupied?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, if I could qualify that, um, we still feel like, um, if given enough flexibility in the transfer authority for the governor, we will be able to move some of the resources around and minimize the impact on personnel.
But could you minimize it to the point where there's no impact?
No.
So there will be some impact?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not quantifying it at this point.
Right.
It could be ten positions, it could be twenty positions, it could be a hundred positions, I don't know what it is, but, but is, is it likely that there's going to be some positions? I mean, it could be fifteen positions, you can handle it with young classified folks, and you don't have to affect...
Yes, sir.
...uh, classified jobs. If it's more, you may have to, but I, I'm, I'm just really starting to think that it's, it's very hard to anticipate a scenario short of, I mean, the only scenario I can anticipate, frankly, is that it turns out your revenues are going to perform better than is being anticipated in this, uh, in this, uh, uh, revenue section. And, you know, knock on wood, the good news of the first six months turns into decent news in the last six months, and it turns out that, uh, maybe you got a little wiggle room there. Because again, I got to say, I mean, I could be wrong about this, I, I, you know, I defer to the, uh, to the, to the wisdom of others on this, on this matter, but if you're sixteen million up today, you know, maybe you will, um, you won't be sixteen million up for the second half of the year, but I, I'm really having a hard time seeing you falling in comparison to last year. But it's possible. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much Speaker Forbes. Senator Respicio?
Just so, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't seem like, um, I don't have any questions. I do want to wait till, uh, Mr. Delarosa provides the information we requested prior to lunch.
It's being run right now. They're, they're doing it...
So I'll, I'll wait till I get those documents, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Are there, Senator Shimizu?
Yeah, just, what are we waiting for? Right this very moment, this silence, are we waiting for some more?
I'm waiting for a question as chair...
Okay.
Or a comment from a member of the body.
Oh, okay, okay, and then we're still going to get some, uh, people from some more information we requested earlier? Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Delarosa, real quick, um, we had spoken earlier, I just wanted to put it as a matter of record, um, the fire department had, of course, instituted fees, and, um, I was commenting to you about where, um, those were reflected, uh, for the benefit of the other members. Could you articulate, um, what came of those fees in the spreadsheet that you created for the body?
Yes, uh, Senator, because the fire department fees will go into the flame account, they are not part of the general fund revenues, so we did not calculate them as part of the revenue statements that we provided for you, or the revenue projections we provided here. Uh, these reflect only what the general fund revenues will be. The flame account is a special fund.
That's a special fund, so in the totality of things, when you're looking at, uh, the entire revenue for the fire department going into the flame account, um, those monies will be used in lieu of general fund revenues to offset maintenance, supplies, equipment, um, and things of that nature, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that is to the benefit of the fire department to make sure that their operational needs are not compromised through the, um, budgetary shortfalls that we're looking at, correct?
That's correct.
And just to go back to what you had spoken about earlier regarding the fire department, um, in ninety-eight percent of their budget in essence is general fund, uh, derived, or derived from the general fund, and a five percent reduction of that budget would result in what?
Let me clarify that, uh, that ninety per, ninety-eight percent of their general fund appropriation covers personnel. So clearly, if you cut five percent from that, you are already into the personnel, uh, operating levels.
You also said that the transfer authority of the governor, um, from the limited funds or the pool of limited funds currently available for transfer, um, is not sufficient to be able to offset some of the demands of the agencies that are going to be taking a five percent cut, correct?
Yes.
Now, if the percentage of those funds, as opposed to adding other funds into them, were available to you, would that be adequate?
I don't believe so, because the, the pool that... I don't believe so, because the pool that, no, it will not, because the pool that the governor is able to transfer from, in that, even in those agencies, they're going to be short. So if we only limit it to that 15% of the general fund appropriations for operations, you'd essentially be crippling another agency in order to augment, one agency in order to augment the other.
Now, from our discussions that we were talking some weeks ago regarding the Fire Department fees, that's going to generate somewhere in the range of 1.2 to 1.5 million, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Will that, in addition to the transfer authority, be sufficient to adjust upwards the personnel needs of that agency?
At $1 million, they're running the report right now, they will have a shortfall, I think when we ran this exercise, and I, don't quote me on this, I'm just going off the top of my head from when we did run this exercise, I think they're about $1,060,000 short, just based on the deappropriation.
Okay.
We have, though, in this exercise also prorated the $3.1 million shortfall into the agencies. So there's even less levels from which to take the 5%.
So it's 5% plus X, whatever X is, is relative to the entire pool of agencies and the percentage that they make up of that full amount, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So you divided it proportionate to the actual monies that each agency has in relationship to other agencies?
The percentage of the appropriate, of the general fund appropriation that they get.
Okay, so if one agency represents 5% of the total revenue in that column that you provided, then they took 5%?
Of the 3.1, that's correct.
Of the 3.1, okay. And again, you're computing that figure so far as what that actual number is and what the impact of that will be per agency?
Yes, they're preparing the spreadsheet that shows the different numbers side by side.
Now, from our discussions previous, also, you indicated Department of Corrections is one of those agencies which is operating pretty much up to the line for general fund necessity, correct?
Yes.
Now, if they take a 5% reduction, what is their current threshold?
I think their shortfall at this point is about, I believe it's about $800,000.
Okay.
That's prior to the proration of the 3.1.
And insofar that these agencies obviously are compromised, many of the larger public safety apparatus, so we know that compromising their ability to operate and then, of course, going into already diminished personnel strengths, that would be a pretty significant blow to those agencies, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Munia Barnes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, John. You know, as we continue to wait for the new documentation that's going to be presented before us, I just want to get a clearer picture, Mr. Chair, of how this is going to work, because we've gone through this really lengthy process, and I'm seeing all these different numbers before us. From what I understand, we did amendments on the floor, and with those amendments, we looked at some agencies who were before us that said they could not live within the means of if they were cut. And with that, there were amendments that were made by the good speaker from Baragada and put those appropriations back in. Today, as we speak, this present time, without looking at any of the documentations that the governor's office is going to give back to us, where are we at today? Are those amendments that were made on the floor by this body, will they be included back in and then worked the deappropriation? Or are we looking at the deappropriation and then some?
Yeah, again, the question to the Chair is, in fact, that's why I've been working with the Clerk's Office, and right now, the Clerk's Office is proofreading the draft engrossed bills, number 74, based on all the amendments that have been made, and of course, that was supposed to be presented to us, they're working on it now, that will be presented to the body. And obviously, then, there is the, this gross, the draft engrossed bill number 74 as it is, there will also be, as a result of this presentation by the administration, proposed amendments proffered by the administration to deal with also the adjustments in the bill. So again, we are waiting, the draft engrossed bill number 74, and it is being proofreaded this time, and that should be provided hopefully shortly. And at the same time, we've left off, there were several questions that were brought up by members of the body from the administration. I know the administration is working on that as well.
So, Mr. Chair, am I to understand that there will be the engrossment bill presented before us in a couple of minutes, plus the presentation from the governor's office, together as one or two separate documentations presented to us as a body?
Actually, at this point, right now, there has been a presentation made by the administration that is, of course, you participated in.
Yes, I understand.
We are now in the question and answer process, and also, if there are statements to be made, and we are waiting for some of the information that was requested. And again, we've been working these many weeks, there is the draft engrossed bill that is presently being proofread, that we presented to the members of the body. But again, we're allowing for this.
So again, two separate presentations, two separate documentations, one from the governor's office, I think John's shaking his head, and then one from the engrossment that we've been working on. Just need to understand and make that clarification for, so that I can understand with all the numbers I have before me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Shimizu?
So, Mr. Chair, right now, if we've exhausted all questions and so forth, we're just going to wait till the draft comes before us?
Yeah, the Chairman is looking to the members of the body for any comments or questions. I do know after you, there is another senator that has raised his hand as well.
Okay, that'll be fine.
So, do you have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to just get a real strong feel as to the time element for that draft that we'll be getting, because, you know, we've gone through this for six weeks, and I anxiously await it so we can, you know, start reviewing it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify that the information we're getting, when you show the 5% deappropriation for the specific departments and agencies, are you going to show us the budget category of where those cuts are going to be? I mean, if, for example, the Department of Administration, according to this, would receive 5% of 8 million, so that'll be about $400,000 cut. Are you going to show from which budget category that $400,000 will be applied? Is it going to be applied to personnel? Is it going to be applied to contractual? Is it going to be applied to utilities? Which budget category? Is that going to be part of the information, or are you just going to give us a total deappropriation amount of 5%? And we don't know where the agency is going to take those cuts from?
I would, we would be providing just the overall appropriation, the deappropriation.
Right, so it could mean that they're going to cut and not pay their power bill. I mean, that's a possibility. We just don't, we won't know that from the information that you will provide. It'll be aggregate?
It will be an aggregate, per department.
Per department? Okay, all right. I know that if, I know that in some of the first round of budget cuts of the 2.5%, that there were, although it was aggregate, when we had the departments and agencies in here, some of them indicated or identified where the reductions are going to come from. And I'm wondering if that's a possibility of getting that information based on a 5% cut. I know that it may seem like, you know, we're asking for the detailed information, but to me, I think that's just necessary to understand it.
I can certainly have the agencies do that, I don't know how quickly we can get that back to you today.
Right, no, I don't expect that they'll be able to do that, you know, by today.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. Senator Respecho?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Speaker Pangolino's questioning, John, I thought it was perfectly clear before we recessed for lunch, that the 5% appropriation you were going to provide us was not just the amount, that you were going to provide a summary, agency by agency, and let the legislature know exactly what that impact would mean to those departments and agencies. Because if we just ask you for a bottom line total, I told you that any one of us in this legislature could have done that.
Yes, Senator, and to clarify, what I was answering for Senator Pangolino was, what you will not get today, because we're not, we don't have enough time to generate, is we're not going to fill 16 vacancies that are funded. What you will see is what the operational costs are, yeah, costs are for the agency, what the personnel costs are for the agency. When you see the, when we show the impact of the deappropriation, as compared to what the operational and personnel costs are, you'll see those agencies where clearly you're well into the personnel category already.
But shouldn't that impact be detailed enough to say for the Department of Administration, this is how many personnel it will impact? The Director of Revenue and Taxation was able to quantify for us that a 2.5% increase, it might mean terminating or furloughing 20 employees. So at double that impact, would it be 40 employees or would it be 35 employees? You just, that's the kind of information I think we need, John, to force this result of this deappropriation, whatever that may be, to keep it in a very transparent process.
Sure, and that's the information I can get from, is what I told Senator Pangolino we could get. I cannot provide that detail today, but we can tell you, every agency is going to need to incur operating costs.
Okay, let me ask you, has anyone from the administration made any contacts with the individual departments and agencies to specifically ask them what that 5% deappropriation would mean to their agency? Absent any ability to backdoor these monies back into those agencies, just given a flatline 5% across-the-board cut, has any contact been made with the various directors to ask them to give the governor guidance on what that deappropriation mandate would mean for them?
The agencies are working on the impact and how they're going to address the impact of the 5% deappropriation.
But then again, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're going to, supposed to deliberate on a different scenario with Bill 74 based on the deappropriation, and so we're supposed to, again, we look at the numbers before we get the information as to what this impact would mean.
Senator, the deappropriation exercise is in the law already.
I understand that.
So regardless, they would be having to go through this and calculate what their impact is.
I understand that, but is the administration just going to say we're following the law and not recommending the legislature what exactly the impact of that law would mean to those particular departments and agencies?
No, not at all. The agencies are working on what those reductions would be.
Here's an analogy that I use, and why I believe that implementing the deappropriation is impracticable, and as a means of simply saying that the budget is balanced. You have a family who's living in a house that they own, they have a mortgage liability on that house, and one day they just decide, because of their cash flow, that they can't afford to keep that house. So they move into a smaller apartment and they rent, maybe for half the price, and they continue to, and their cash flow may improve, but they still haven't either rented that house or sold that house, so they still have that existing liability. And until the bank sends them a letter, makes contact with them, that you're defaulted, we're going to take your bank, your house away, and then you find yourself in bankruptcy. That's how I see this, Mr. Chairman, with the automatic deappropriation. We simply can't just say, oh, wow, this deappropriation led to balancing the budget, when this legislature and the administration haven't even begun to recognize what that impact would mean to the government of Guam and in the delivery of services. So we haven't even scratched that surface yet. And you're right, John, even, the governor can only transfer based on what the appropriation level is, so if the appropriation is reduced from 494 to 469, that impact certainly is going to mean more than operations. And so the administration's going to have to let the legislature know, yeah, there might not be any impact to personnel, but we're not going to pay power, we're not going to pay water, we're not going to pay vendors, we're not going to pay tax refunds, and that's also what we don't want to hear.
We'll provide, my apologies, I misunderstood the report you were asking for. We will provide more details on the agencies, from the agencies, I just will not be able to get it to you before the end of today.
What's the administration's game plan and how to deal with the deappropriation mandate? And how that would eventually impact the, obviously, we talked about GPSS earlier and what $8 million may mean to them. Is there any, is there any intentions of the administration to ask that these agencies be re-appropriated in this bill? Or are we seriously going to consider something that I said earlier, that BBMR, together with, through the governor's leadership, get with all these department and agencies and quantify what that impact would mean and how much more funding they may require, and then have the legislature address that through a supplemental budget process?
They are going through the exercise of how the 5% will affect their agencies with half the year left. What we need to do on the administration's side is work on that, on the understanding that the 5% will be deappropriated, and run the exercise of adjusting the agency's operations to that level. Yes, there are things that we would like to see in this bill that will prevent that or restore appropriation levels, but the revenues just won't support them as they're presented now.
But do you think, given the fact that the governor has to make a presentation to standard purers, do you think that it would be, I believe, I'll tell you what I believe, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, I believe that it'll be sending the wrong message to reinstate appropriations in this bill, and simply say, on one hand, we're going to institute reporting requirements to hold these directors' feet to the fire and be accountable for it, and for their actions or inactions, and then on the other hand, do things like still allow the governor to transfer authority, to transfer monies back into those agencies? And number two, be even more blatant about it by calling for a reinstatement of appropriations in this existing bill?
We have not, what you have before you is everybody taking their share of the deappropriation as well as additional reductions of 3.1 million. We did not ask for restorations of any appropriations to anyone. We recognize that there are certain services provided by this government that are deemed more critical and are the priorities of both the legislature and the governor. But we also recognize that, given the extent of reductions required, that everyone's going to have to take a share of it. When the governor goes, and when S and P and the governor sit together and the legislature, we need to show the fiscal discipline of being able to not grow this deficit any larger than it has this year. In our discussions, in our initial discussions, they're not expecting us to pay it down in a year, but they're expecting that we're not going to grow it in this year and aggravate the situation. And put together a plan over a five-year period or so that begins to pay that down to zero. They don't expect us to significantly disrupt the services of this government in a year. They do want to see some liquidity to ensure that the debt service obligations of this government are not jeopardized. And they also want to see that we're able to manage the limited resources we have. The transfer authority is a management tool that I believe, as far as I can recall, has been provided to every governor, because you can't foresee what might occur in an agency or a service where additional funding might be required. And so, transfer authority in this situation just becomes a little more valuable, because the resources that we're having to cut, a 5% reduction at this point in the year will have almost a 10% impact on an agency. With half a year remaining, they'll have to adjust 10%. So using transfer authority in this scenario is not a backdoor reappropriation, it doesn't raise the level of spending that's... It's, doesn't raise the level of spending that's authorized. It just gives the governor the opportunity to look at things like what I said to Senator Guthberts earlier, if there are unfunded vacancies that we know an agency can hold off on funding, that we can use that authority to move into somewhere else where there are warm bodies performing services.
Does this revised scenario take into account the salary cuts that the governor was proposing pursuant to executive order for himself, for the lieutenant governor, for all the directors and deputy directors and all the unclassified employees at the governor's office and throughout the government?
What the appropriation levels reflect, Senator, are the adjustments to the deappropriation and the spread of the three point one million dollars prorated through the agencies. I don't have the specific details of the breakdown of how that's gonna be absorbed by the agencies. It's what Senator Panglinan has asked for, it's what you've just asked for as well. We'll provide that information.
You know, we keep asking, and it's not just myself, it's been several members. We even asked the Director of Administration to provide the legislature with a copies of personnel actions which reflect any personnel adjustments or salary adjustments made to various personnel. You know, the struggle I have, John, is that we see the reports, the numbers don't lie, and then when we make our analysis based on the numbers, the comments are, and what we're seeing in the media are two different things. So I'm just trying very hard to hold people accountable for the things that they say based on the information that we get, and if, if someone from your administration says that cuts have been made, why don't you also do the responsible thing and provide us copies of those personal actions which reflect those statements?
Sure, I'll make sure you get those today.
And then just very quickly on the revenue side, previous speaker said that we're collecting a little bit more. I mean, I hope that's the case, because when, in oh-six, when we projected four thirty-five, we got four hundred eighteen million. For oh-seven, we projected as high as four fifty-seven. We're tracking at a base of four thirty-four. That's obviously higher than the four eighteen we got from the last fiscal year. So obviously, I was, I would be expecting that kind of trend to occur. But I want to caution anyone from wanting to quickly go and adjust those revenue estimates based on March collections, because even the administration said that that may be because of the tax amnesty programs, and we can't just see that, if in the end that's a windfall, then great, that can go down to paying tax refunds or other liabilities. But for now, you feel very comfortable with the revised revenue estimate, assuming that this government is gonna collect thirty-five million dollars in the next five months because of various revenue enhancement measures? That's what it is, four thirty-four up to four sixty-nine is a difference of thirty-five million dollars over the next five months. So that's, that's one hand. That's why I'm struggling to see whether or not this is a balanced budget, because this, this Bill seventy-four, as revised by the administration, assumes that we're gonna collect thirty-five million dollars in additional revenue in the next five months. It assumes that the twenty million dollar, the deappropriation is practical and possible to implement, and also assumes that we would collect twelve million dollars in proposed fees.
Okay, I'll try and address these one at a time. Yes, we feel comfortable with the proposed revenue levels, because we have used the four thirty-four base, and the adjustments made to that have been, we didn't make different assumptions on the increased collections at all. It's only based on the other initiatives that were then added to what is our normal revenue collections. The amnesty programs, which will speed up the process of collecting on prior year's taxes owed, the fees that are in as well. So yes, we do feel comfortable with the new revenue level. In terms of the deappropriation, Senator, it's not an issue of how practical it is, it's the law. We have to implement the deappropriation. What we're showing here is a reflection of the realities.
John, there are many laws that are in the books, that the administration over the last five years have cherry picked what they want to follow and what they don't want to follow, so it's very convenient for you to say it's the law and we're gonna follow it.
I don't believe that's the case, Senator.
Well, that's where we could agree to disagree.
I think we follow the budget laws, but...
Do we, you want an example, Mr. DeRosa, of where you don't follow the law?
Several examples, too.
No, thank you.
There are plenty. I just wanted to kinda, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No objections, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify what I heard, that the appropriation levels here do not reflect the cuts in the original initiative that was submitted by the governor, that those have been now set aside, and the only cuts that are, that will be made is the one based upon the automatic deappropriation?
Yeah, we came in with a proposed two and a half percent reduction. The deappropriation took that, requires a five percent reduction. So we, we replaced what was the two and a half percent reduction with what was twice that much, with the deappropriation, the five percent.
Okay, but, but for example, the two and a half percent reduction, that there were other initiatives that the governor had quantified that have resulted in savings of already a million dollars, and, you know, in the, in the initial presentation, that the governor had indicated resulted in savings beyond the two point five percent, I believe, and for example... I, I'm just trying to, there's, for example, there was, I think the twelve million in cost reductions from executive order to EO two oh oh seven oh two, that's the two point five, if I believe correctly, which have not been implemented or portions have been implemented.
Yes and no?
Well, because if you add two point five percent, at two and a half percent is twelve million, at five percent, we're looking at twenty-one million or nineteen million, pretty much, pretty close.
At the two and a half percent reductions in appropriations, there would have been more required from some agencies than just stopping travel, freezing.
Right, no, I understand.
So what the executive order represented were some administrative...
Initiatives.
Initiatives that we could hold the line on certain things, but...
So there was that twelve million from the executive order, and then he says, in addition to the twelve million, says one million in cost reduction from the governor's directive, not executive order EO two oh seven dash two, but other directives by the governor. I guess the only, the question I have is, this budget here, the reconciled budget here, is not reflect, does that reflect the one million from the other directives that the governor has issued, or is that kind of lumped back in and now we're only taking the five percent?
Yes, it does take into effect the initiatives on the reductions in, in the directive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Panglinan. Vice Speaker Campbell, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, there was an, an earlier amendment made a week or so ago, that though I have some issues with the amendment by the previous speaker, I understand the reasons for the amendment. And obviously, there was a statement made by the BBMR director that with the five percent deappropriation, there would be, even with that five percent deappropriation, there would be no necessity for any type of furloughs or cuts in, in personnel costs. And again, given flexibility or transfer authority, it would, there would be no need or requirement for the touch or reductions in personnel costs. And obviously, there was also a couple of senators that followed up with that same question, and the same statement was made from the Director of BBMR. Again, there were a couple of directors that, when asked that same statement, said, obviously, there would have to be an impact on personnel cost as a result of the deappropriation. But obviously, with the BBMR director, the individual that looks at the big picture, you know, again, it was of his opinion that this flexibility, flexibility given to the administration would, again, allow the administration to make the cuts and yet still not have any impact on personnel costs. And another assumption, I think, by the mover of the amendment was, of course, the concern of the classified positions and ensuring that, you know, with these reductions in appropriations, that for, for those folks that are classified, that have been working in the government of Guam, there would be some protections to them, you know, those are the folk, and obviously, I would like to see some prioritizations as well in these classified employees such as teachers or policemen, firemen, nurses. So there was, there was an intent in this particular amendment based on statements made by the administration, and as well, I feel by the, by the mover of the amendment, for protections as much as possible, the classified positions of the government of Guam. Again, earlier today, you did mention that with maximum flexibility, there would be, you know, again, the administration would, in fact, I'm not too sure, that's why I want to ask that question again, I'm not, I'm not too sure if I caught it, with, with maximum flexibility, again, and I assume that also means with the Guam Public School System, correct? In areas that you do not have transfer authority, correct?
Yes.
That with this maximum transfer authority, then is your opinion that personnel costs would not be affected, at all?
I, I believe what I said was, we would be able to minimize the impact on personnel.
Okay, so there, there would be some impact. Now, based on, I think, some of the concerns of the mover of that amendment and other members of the body, if there is to be adjustments in personnel costs, obviously, I think every one of us would like to see and ensure that whatever language that may have to be incorporated to allow for that flexibility, also understanding that there will be a necessity, and you just mentioned it right now, that there will be a necessity for some revisions in personnel costs downward, we would like to see, and I'm sure all of us would like to see, again, some of the assumptions and some of the concerns that were from the senators, that, you know, again, if there's gonna, if we're gonna look at, at the, at all the personnel of the government of Guam, we'd like to look at the, at the, at the priority areas, like I mentioned, whether it's education, safety, or public health. It's important, I think, too, also to look at, at the classified positions and the unclassified positions and seeing, you know, that there's also certain protections towards the classified positions as well. If there is to be this maximum flexibility, and we were to give it to you, to the administration, what is the plan of action of the administration in having to make these decisions on personnel adjustments? Do you, is there, is there, is there a plan at this point in, okay, are we going to furlough? Are we going to adjust hours, thirty-two hour work week? Are we, are we gonna do some other option or a combination of options? And what I'd like to get from you, obviously, and that's why, my personal opinion, I, I can't see any way that we can't touch personnel costs, just based on, you're talking over twenty-three million, twenty-two to twenty-three million dollars in reductions in appropriations. So with that, I'd like to get from you folks in the administration, what is the plan and how do you intend to, to move forward if there is a necessity for adjustments in personnel costs downward? What is that plan of action?
Obviously, those services, those positions that are deemed as the priority in education, health, and safety will be preserved, will not attempt to affect those levels in any way. But then, what the agencies have been asked, even prior to the budget discussions, and it was brought up at some point where we were talking about at the two and a half percent and then an exercise somewhere at about eight percent, given that if there were no adjustments to the budget, that's the, that's what they would have had to do to make adjustments to their agency budgets at the time. So the agencies have gone through and have begun that process of seeing where they can, and I think several agencies spoke about that, where they can reduce operating costs to share the costs of things like rent and utilities, to share administrative support costs, and to, as much as possible, combine resources on the operating side. And on the, on the personnel side, the rules and regulations are very clear as to how that occurs. Senator, whether it's thirty-two hour work weeks or stay home for six months, it's all under the furlough procedures. And so, there are, there are already steps in the rules and regs as to how you can make that happen. And it's really an issue of initiating that process with the notices and stuff.
Now, again, there are notices that have gone out to the different departments in regards to the deappropriation, but with that notice, and, and again, you're, you're asking these agencies to, to live within the five percent, but are there certain directions that you would like to see or that you've, you've brought forth to these agencies, that there will be a consistency in at least the, the formula as to how, how these, you know, if there's to be personnel cuts, how it's to be done? And I, and I, and I don't know whether you can say the Guam Police Department, the Fire Department, BBMR, or Department of Labor should be treated all the same, but there, I would assume that there are, there are certain rules of engagement that you folks would like to see done consistently, so that you won't have maybe one department going after, let's say, first maybe doing something with the unclassifieds in that department, and then, and then, or maybe adjusting that we're, we're just gonna cut back on our operational and not on personnel, but on cutting back on supplies, but not touch on the hours. There may be another agency that will say, man, we've gotta, we gotta furlough, we gotta furlough a certain amount of people, a number of, of workers, to, to, to ensure that we keep within this budget, that is, at the five percent reduction. There might be this other department that may decide, no, we're gonna probably close up for Friday, and with that Friday, we're closed up, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do it this way. So, so that's why I'm wondering, with this, with this pronouncement to the agencies, I'm just wondering, is there, is there some sort of consistent game plan so that they can, that every director, every agency has, will have that checklist and say, okay, this is item one, this is how we're gonna proceed first, item two, item three?
I think, I think, Senator, well, first of all, every agency was asked to review their, their agency's mandates, to look at their, their current operating levels in their specific agency only, and to do things in several steps. The first one was to see what you can do immediately to pare down the cost of operations, and how much savings does that incur. Then to look at your core mandates and start to determine those that, you know, you have to absolutely hold the line on, and those that you can reduce your focus on. In a way, in, in the way that we've prepared for the eight percent cut was, there were, there may have been some of the services currently provided at agencies that we will not be able to provide, especially if it was gonna affect personnel, and they would not be available to provide those services. In terms of, I don't think, as far as I can recall, there was never on the table the option to close on Fridays. They have a mandate to stay open, they'll stay open. As a matter of fact, some of those services are extended hours. Um, as a matter of fact, some of those services are extended hours, uh, by law now. So that is not an option that was reviewed in that respect. If they were, if an agency, uh, opted to do the reduced work week, it would be staggered in a way that kept the agency running while those employees were off on whatever specific days. So there wouldn't be, uh, a, one day a week when nobody showed up. It would have been staggered in those plans. So every agency was asked to, uh, come up with their plan for how those reductions were to occur in their agencies. Because some agencies would be able to, um, sustain higher levels of their personnel by reducing their operating expenses.
Uh, then again, that's, I was gonna, that was the next question I was gonna, was it, would be, would it be based then, uh, uh, and again, this is where, if it was the intent of the administration to ensure that personnel costs are least affected, then, then a policy would be set, and with that, you'd look at every agency and see any agency that has ninety-five percent or above, uh, that are personnel costs, and agencies that maybe ninety percent, uh, are personnel costs, there may be even some agencies that are running at eighty percent, uh, personnel costs. So what, i- i- I mean, is that, is that part of the way you guys would formulate your priorities and who would get the five percent cut, who would, or some would get a little bit back and someone would get seven percent?
Y- y- you mean in terms of transfer or in terms of requesting additional appropriations?
Yeah, transfer authority, yeah, transfer authority. Uh, I, in fact, there are certain agi-, I think, poli-, is it the Fire Department?
Fire DOC.
DOC.
GP.
What, what agencies at this point right now are at, um, ninety, ninety-five percent?
At the five percent deappropriation level and the, and the spread of three point one, I cannot name an agency that does not, that, for which the personnel will not be impacted, given the current level of the government's transfer authority. Now, I'm not trying to say that if you just give them all the transfer authority, it won't affect anybody. All I'm saying is it allows us to minimize that impact. So everybody, eh, I think at every level, and when the report comes down, I think it'll show that at every, at every agency, given this level of deappropriation, it will affect personnel.
Yeah, and again, one of my concerns is if, if that's just the way it's gonna be treated, then what you're gonna have, there may be this smoothing again, and every agency will have at, uh, ninety-five percent, uh, personnel cost level with all the deappropriation, maybe not ninety percent, uh, maybe not eighty-five, maybe not ninety-eight, but it'd be at ninety-five. But then, what you would probably occur is you'd have everybody working, uh, but then at the same time, there wouldn't be any money left for, uh,
The power.
ammo or paying your power bill, I mean, paying their power bills or, you know, purchasing of supplies.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, we're not running the exercise where we just completely zero out their operating expenses, we know that's, that's just not realistic. And in some agencies, their operating expenses are much higher, um, the supplies of medicines for the ambulances, this maintenance of vehicles, things like that are also part of their operating costs. So, uh, that's, that's why, even though I can't tell you right now without the report what specific impact it's gonna have, I can tell you that it's gonna affect every agency at the personnel.
Is there, I guess my last question, is there a ballpark figure of this twen-, of this twenty-some, twenty-two million, nineteen plus twenty, 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 twenty-two million, um, in, um, in appropriation cuts, to take an, a, a effect, a ballpark figure, how much do you, do you project would be personnel costs?
I, I, I can't tell you that until,
Okay.
But I was just, uh, given a note that the report should be down here in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
One quick question.
Senator Pangolin.
The, um, the Bill seventy-four markup number, that's the total appropriation for the operating costs of those departments, is that just the general fund appropriation?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, I, I guess we've, I have all these other spreadsheets, and I have a spreadsheet here that has a column that says general fund appropriation FY2007, and they just don't seem to match, so.
Is that in reference to the, this Bill seventy-four?
Yes, Bill seventy-four.
Okay.
With the five, ten, and fifteen percent budget cut scenario. So, but the, the general fund appropriation column should be the same, um, so that's just, uh, I'm just saying.
The, the five, ten, fifteen scenario was run at the current public law. Uh, that's the sheet that BBMR ran, because if we were gonna implement now, really, they'd have to implement based on the current appropriation levels.
Okay, that's what you tell me? That's what you tell me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you know what, there's gonna be, uh, again, the, the, the numbers are coming down right now? We're gonna take a recess for, actually, there, there's gonna be in about twenty minutes. So let's take a, let's take a recess till, we'll give it a half hour recess. Actually, let's get it, might as well, we'll, we'll recess until four o'clock. Yeah, Senator Guthers, there, the, the numbers are gonna be coming in in about twenty minutes? Okay, we can cut it shorter, would you like to recess and?
Sure.
We recess, we'll recess until four o'clock.
Apparently, uh, distributes the five percent cut across the departments that at this stage, at any rate, uh, would be affected by it. Uh, secondarily, you all have in front of you, um, the bill as engrossed so far, so that we can use it, uh, to make any changes that are gonna be required. Uh, the bill is not fully engrossed yet, so those of you who have made some amendments, if you become panic-stricken because you get to chapter six or five and you realize, oh my God, an amendment I made isn't quite there yet, or there's an error, the legal council is supposed to still be engrossing it right now instead of standing in the back of the hall. Okay, good. So, uh, he's continuing to work on it and, um, uh, you know, we'll give you a, an up-to-date and gross copy as soon as it's available, but we need to have something to work off of now. And it was decided it would probably be easier, uh, to do so based on, uh, such amendments that have been made so far, uh, to chapter two. Um, earlier today, the administration made a, made a presentation of what it believes the effect of the various insundry fees and exemption eliminations, uh, that were, uh, that were, uh, acquired earlier would be on the revenues in chapter two. So we'll begin there, and anybody who wishes to, since they're not in a position to make any amendment, who wishes to make any amendment with respect to revenue, or for that matter, uh, ask a question or engage in some discussion on one of those sections, we'll be permitted to do so. But what we will do, a- as we go through chapter two, is rather than deal with it in, in one totality, is only deal with amendments to, uh, to amend, since I doubt anyone's gonna be deleting the entirety of revenues, uh, that would seem like a pointless motion. Uh, and then, uh, we'll proceed on that basis. Senator Calvo, do you have an amendment? And if you do, do I have it?
If the, the amendment could be passed out to the body and to the chairman of the committee.
Well, then what we're gonna do is, it hasn't been passed out yet, we're gonna take a little fifteen second recess, so we don't stand here waiting for an amendment to be passed out. Thank you. Uh, the committee of the halls, uh, back in order, Senator Calvo, you recognized?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, based on, on the deliberations of the body, uh, over the past several weeks, uh, and the proposals put out by the administration in regards to the, um, the revenues, uh, an increase in revenues based on fee proposals put forth by the administration, um, I have an amendment, uh, in behalf of the administration, dealing with, with those changes and the revised revenue figures. So again, Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, moving to amend section one of chapter two.
Okay, even though the amendment is to amend the entire section, um, as I said earlier, uh, it's impossible to discuss the entire section as an entirety, uh, so what we will allow everybody to do, if they wish, is, uh, discuss the amendment, uh, and make further amendments if they choose to, on a line-by-line basis, if, if they wish to.
Which section are we amending again, just to be clear?
I guess, section one of chapter two.
Section one of chapter two, which is the revenue estimates.
Now, just for the record, uh,
Actually, that's section two of chapter two, not section one of chapter two. Would you like to amend your amendment a little bit? Section one of chapter two.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, section one, you're right.
Yeah, section one of chapter two.
Senator Pangolin, proceed?
Yes.
For the record.
Just for the record, when we, um, were discussing the bill, we were still in chapter five, entertaining amendments.
That is true, did you make, did you make any, uh,
No, we had not concluded that.
All right, did you make any motion to go back to this, this morning?
No.
All right, then the first thing that we're gonna have to do, if we are going to discuss this, which presumably is something that is desirable since it may affect further amendments in chapter five, is it's gonna have to be a motion made, uh, to temporarily cease the discussion of chapter five, because you guys don't wanna shut out chapter five, I'm sure some of you still have amendments you wish to make.
That's correct.
Right, to go back to chapter two to take care of this as well as three and four, and then return to five. Would someone like to make that motion?
Why couldn't we finish chapter five? Because the amendments, no,
I believe.
If you would just,
Certainly, go ahead.
Let me conclude. There are amendments that may be made in chapter five that would require amendments to chapter one, I mean, chapter two, section one, after we adopt it.
That's a good point. I don't have a problem with that necessarily, Senator Pangolin, provided that we not conclude chapter five, because the reverse is also true. Actions taken here may actually elicit amendments to chapter five as well.
Which would mean that we would have reconsidered.
I understand that, but for example, I'll give you a perfect example of that, if we were going to place, uh, 'cause some, you know, as we get into four, there's going to be these applications of this five percent across the board business.
Mm-hmm.
But there may be sections, uh, amendments that people wish to make to chapter five that are specific to some departments or agencies, conditions upon which this particular five percent cut may be, you know, things along those lines.
Yes, and if we did that in chapter five, then we would only have to amend that once, now we gotta amend it twice.
Oh, no, I understand that, so, but, so I, I have no problem going to five, as long as we keep the door open, just in the case of the possibility that we might wanna revisit it one more time when we're done. I don't have a problem with that. So, are there any amendments to chapter five? Because I have nothing in front of me that resembles amendments to chapter five at this moment. So is there anybody who wishes to present to me an amendment to chapter five? Is it in writing, is it in front of the chair? Then we will take a recess for copies. Uh, how long do you think this will take? Matt? How long? Two minutes then.
Before you, you should have,
One at a time, Judy.
Four amendments.
Yeah, but one at a time.
This will be the first one. Mr. Speaker, the first amendment deals with annual public hearing requirements on fee schedules. As you know, this has been a very grueling, uh, six weeks for all of us, and part of the reason has been the fact that our government administration over the years has not been judicious in, uh, using the administration, Administrative Judication Act to regularly update fee schedules. The purpose of this amendment is to further ensure that the government departments and agencies shall, uh, regularly initiate, uh, the AAA to, uh, bring forth revised fee schedules and our new fee schedules for services provided in government. The amendment reads, "Annual Public Hearing Requirements on Fee Schedules." A new section, three-one-three-one, is added to Division One, Chapter Three, Title Five of the Guam Code annotated as follows. Annual Public Hearing Requirements for Fee Schedules. All departments and agencies of the government of Guam that administer and collect fees for government services shall conduct a public hearing on existing fee schedules to determine public sentiment and receive public input within sixty days of the passage of this act. Beginning in two-oh-oh-eight, all such departments and agencies shall conduct such hearings on an annual basis prior to April one of each year, and shall regularly adjust existing fees or implement new fees for the purpose of cost recovery pursuant to the Administrative Judication Act.
On that motion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second amendment, the second amendment deals with deputy director positions in the departments and agencies of the government of Guam, and this would establish a new section to chapter six of Guam law, read, reading as follows. Deputy Directors, a new, a new three-one-three-o section is added to Division One, Chapter Three, Title Five of the Guam Code annotated as follows. Deputy Directors, beginning on October first, two thousand and eight, only classified employees of the government of Guam shall be eligible to serve in the classified position of deputy director, deputy administrator, assistant general manager, or any other equivalent unclassified position of any department, agency, or instrumentality of the government of Guam, operating with funds appropriated by a legislature subject to the following. A, for purposes of this section, the authority to appoint and remove a deputy director, deputy administrator, assistant general manager, or the equivalent unclassified position shall be exclusively vested with the appointing authority of such agency. For the duration of their term of appointment, employees who are appointed as deputies pursuant to this section shall be entitled to compensation at the unclassified salary levels previously assigned for such positions. However, employees whose salaries exceed such previously assigned levels shall be entitled to compensation at a rate to be determined by the Civil Service Commission. Any classified employee appointed as a deputy pursuant to this section shall have the right to return to his or her classified position upon completion of his or her term of appointment. The provisions contained in this section do not apply to the University of Guam, Guam Community College, Guam Public School System, Judiciary of Guam, the Legislature, the Office of Imaglali Guahan, the Office of Segundo Imaglali Guahan, the Office of the Attorney General, the Mayor's Council of Guam, and any autonomous agency or instrumentality of the government of Guam.
On that motion, we have discussion? Okay, Senator Blas, followed by Senator Shimizu, and then Senator Tenaria.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, if I, I've got a question that the author of the amendment can yield to the question?
Certainly.
And I appreciate the intent of the, of the amendment here, ma'am, but concern that I have here with regards to, um, the, um, utilization of a classified employee for a deputy director position, um, is in the, the case of, um, just in case, there needs to be disciplinary actions as we have discussed in previous discussions with regards to where we're gonna go with deappropriations due to non-compliance of, um, reporting requirements. And this deputy director happens to serve in the capacity of an acting director, how would that affect him?
Well, while they're serving as direct, a deputy director, of course, if they do not comply with the re-, financial reporting requirements of this government- if they do not comply with the financial reporting requirements of this government and they are serving in the acting capacity of director, they will see, I suppose, a salary deduction in their salary. The important thing to remember here, Mr. Chairman, is that we, I believe, need to begin the process of, as my colleague Senator Frank Blas would say, rightsizing our government. And we have to start planning for it. In the departments and agencies of the Government of Guam that fall under the purview of the governor, there are many competent classified personnel, whom I may add, who have appropriate degrees, who could easily fill the position as deputy director and who understand the operational activities of their departments, who could provide very good support to the directors of those departments and agencies. So this would begin the process of making that transition from unclassified position, deputy director, recognizing the talent we have in the career service of the Government of Guam so that the directors who are appointed by the governor may identify competent and qualified individuals within those agencies to serve in the acting capacity of deputy director. That is the intent of this amendment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Along those, that line of questioning, and here's the concern that I would have with regards to this amendment, Mr. Chair, is with regards to, again, recognizing some of the amendments that we had previously passed that are going to be included along with this bill with regards to the deappropriation or actually taking money away from the head of that agency for not complying with the reporting requirements. I do see that down the road, we may run into a situation with regards to the utilization of a classified employee in an unclassified position. Then if this deputy director filling in for that, in that acting capacity, has to receive a reduction in their pay, what happens then to that pay when that employee goes back into the classified service? Is that, is their pay continued, do they continue to lose that?
I would say only as long as they are serving in the unclassified position.
So along those...
Of deputy director.
Along those things, Mr. Chair, you know, I appreciate the intent here. I think though that this, we still need to, there's still a number of legal questions that I may, that we may have in this one. And again, like I said, I can appreciate the intent, but I don't think I can support this amendment right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Shimizu was next in line. Senator Shimizu? Senator Shimizu on the Guthers amendment? On the second Guthers amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I read this amendment, and what it basically does is that only classified employees of the Government of Guam shall be eligible to serve in the unclassified position. There's two distinct classifications. You're either classified or you're unclassified. You're saying now that a classified employee is the only one that will be able to become a deputy director? And there are other people that are in unclassified positions in there. What my concern is the word classified. We are now saying, writing out the job description of a deputy director. It shall come from the classified class to be appointed to an unclassified, which means they won't be subject to the protection of the merit position. You can't be one or the other. If you are, then you might as well just say, if the intent is, you might as well just say the deputy directors are classified positions. In revenue and taxation, back in the day, we had a deputy director, and then we had a deputy commissioner. Then we also had a commissioner of insurance, but a deputy commissioner. That is a classified position, and the other one is an unclassified. But to now try to say that only classified employees... So in other words, within the agency, in order to be at the second post, you just be a classified. So the appointing authority can come in and get from the ranks of a classified to put into the unclassified. I think this is going to create more problems because we set up a criteria. Secondly, as I look at this, there is so many provisions that you do not apply to this agency, to that agency, to this agency. You know, I have a problem with that too. Because, you know, we are one government. We can't have two standards. You know, if it's an unclassified position as a second or first or even a professional unclassified position, then maybe that person will not even be able to go into the deputy with all the professionalism that they have, like I mentioned earlier, in revenue and tax. So you've excluded out anybody that is unclassified, and it shall only be classified. It does not make sense to me, Mr. Chair. And it's for that reason, it's for that reason that I will not support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio? Oh, okay. Senator Palacios? Oh, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, while I support government, streamlining the government, I think there are some implications of this bill. For example, a person serving as a deputy director, a classified person serving in the unclassified position, what appeal process would he be governed by? Would he still be entitled? Should adverse action becomes necessary to take against a person serving, while serving as a nonclassified position as a deputy director, for example, would he still be, I guess, entitled to civil service appeals as though he is a classified position? Those are the questions, you know, the performance rating. Would his performance be rated as a deputy director or as a classified position that he occupies? You know, perhaps this bill probably can better be addressed, I guess, at a public hearing as a standalone bill. And I also would like to hear what directors who now have deputy directors have to say. You know, having a deputy director in an agency has long been the tradition, and it doesn't mean that it has to be accepted as a permanent gospel. But I'd like to hear what they have to say. And of course, in the end, if there can be a savings and efficiency in government, that, of course, I support, but I'd like to hear the other side. And that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I commend the author of the amendment here for what she is attempting to achieve, and I support it. You know, I fully realize that the way that the amendment is written is really an opportunity to ensure that there's continuity within the departments and agencies with the shift of administrations, that you always have somebody who is within the department that have served in a management capacity that will transcend administrations, and they can fall back on doing transition periods or whatever. If you recall, I don't know how many acting appointments we had during the past several years with regards to the departments and agencies, and they rotate. You know, two months here, three months there, your term expired, you go there, and so forth. So that really the department, the line employees of the departments and agencies are left without leadership through no fault of their own because of the shifting sands of which appointments are made. This is not unusual in terms of what is being achieved. And maybe, there may be, you know, numerous questions with regards to the implementation of this and so forth. And maybe this is not the most ideal way of doing it, but it's making a statement saying that we're going to reduce the unclassified level of the Government of Guam and the political appointments, basically. I mean, it's treading on some toes here because you now only have one political appointee or maybe two in the departments and agencies that you can give out and promise to during campaigns because it will be the private secretary and the director. I tell you what we did when we, for example, made a change in the Department of Commerce or Customs and Quarantine at that time, when the two separated, that the deputy director of Commerce really is the senior uniform officer in the department. So you have a director of, I mean, director of Customs, a single political appointee, and then the second guy in command is the senior uniform officer in that department. So that you have continuity, and you don't have a deputy director that is a political appointee. You have somebody who's there, who's able to manage and run the operations. And it's more critical there, much like we have the police commander position. And I know that these two are a little bit different from the different line agencies because these are law enforcement or quasi-law enforcement agencies. And so you do want somebody with the expertise to run the department and carry out the duties of the mission of the department that is not a total political appointee and may not be as qualified to provide the guidance in terms of the expertise and the technical operations of the government. Like I said, the police commander is the second-in-command in the GPD. I know that, and it was originally done that way. Then for political purposes, we put in a deputy, you know, deputy chief of police, but we still have the police commander, the commandant. And we did that at Customs without a deputy. We now have the deputy, the senior uniform officer functioning as the deputy, which is kind of what this is. And it really has not presented, I believe, any kind of real problem. I think it has enhanced the professionalism of the department. It had enhanced the ability of the officers in that department to ensure that they can go to someone who's there in that position because of their qualification in terms of knowing the operations of Customs and Quarantine. And this is exactly what would happen here. Maybe the way is just eliminate the deputy position, and you just have the senior administrative officer functioning as a deputy director. And that could, and I've had many discussions with numerous directors over the years. And some of them have no problem that on both Democratic appointee and Republican administrations. Both say that they would have no problem if they had a senior administration officials who can function as a deputy. They run, and they're familiar with the operational departments. The guy at the top provides the policy direction and ensures that it gets carried out. And he may not be as technically adept as the senior administrative official in that, but he knows the policy and is able to represent the governor's policy to the department. But you have the protection and the buffer between the political policy that the governor wants to put in and the bureaucratic and bureaucratic policy of running the department to ensure that we provide the best service to the public. So I understand there may be many questions with the implementation and so forth, but this makes it effective on October 1, 2008. And it begins the process, if placed in the bill and passed, of trying to vet out all of these concerns that we have now. And I know the argument may be a public hearing as a standalone bill may be the process to do that. But if that's the will of the body, I'm going to support that. But I want to articulate some of my experiences when, how, what occurred when we placed that requirement at Customs and that it really has not hampered the operations of the department. And in fact, I think has increased the professionalism of that department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino, on the Guthers amendment. Senator Rispichio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I too also want to rise in support of the amendment offered by the Senator from Yilau. And I want to say that her amendment, Mr. Chairman, is not unreasonable at all. It does not say effective immediately, there shall be no deputy directors within the various departments and agencies. I believe that this amendment should be part of this revised fiscal year 2007 budget because this is the time when the administration is currently working on the budget for fiscal year 2008. And just in my own mind, quantifying how many deputy director positions are out there, I think we could realize a ballpark savings of at least $3 million, Mr. Chairman. And I think that if we put this amendment in this bill, it would be a clear signal to the administration that when they prepare their budget for fiscal year 2008, they would not have to incorporate this deputy director positions. And then we would never, at that juncture, ever, ever have an opportunity to implement it because by then it'll be too late. And so by doing this now, we give some courtesies to those deputy directors, who, those individuals who are currently in the deputy director positions, and so that they're not blindsided. Remember, Mr. Chairman, we don't want to do anything that would blindside any employees, classified especially, and even unclassified employees. I also want to commend Senator Guthers for this amendment because she recognizes, just like most of us here in this body, that the governor, when he meets with standard emporers, he must demonstrate some sound fiscal policies and some opportunities to address the structural imbalance. And one ways to do that is to have the highest classified employees, just as the previous speaker mentioned, to provide that kind of continuity. And I think that if we start demonstrating that we're doing things beyond every four-year election cycle, every two-year senatorial election cycle, we're going to start to see this government have a consistency in the kind of delivery of goods and services to the people of Guam. So I rise in support of this amendment and to simply tell the mover to do a bill, have a public hearing. I agree with that kind of sentiment, but I think in this case, it's not necessary. I think we should put this as part of our fiscal year revised 2007 bill in Bill 74. Because again, if you're going to wait to have a public hearing, I even doubt that the gentle lady will ever get a public hearing on this bill. And if we're going to wait at that juncture and wait to implement this in the fiscal year 2008 budget, we would never, ever have that opportunity, like I said. So I rise in support of the amendment. I'm hoping that we have at least eight people who agree that we have an opportunity here to begin to address the structural imbalance of this government of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Rispichio. On the Guthers amendment, there has been, is there any other speakers? Oh, to close it, would you like to close, Senator Guthers?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of my colleagues for their comments and their input regarding this amendment. I know it represents a paradigm shift in the way our government thinks and the way our government operates. This concept is not new. For years, various leaders in the community, various citizens in the community have talked about the need to rationalize the leadership positions in our government within the departments and agencies on Guam. There's been much discussion about how we should structure those leadership positions. The positions of deputy directors at this point in time represent political appointments. We have very, very good and fine deputy directors, and we've had such individuals in the history of the Government of Guam. But within the departments and agencies of the Government of Guam, we also have superb classified employees, employees in the career service, many of whom have the proper education, the proper degrees, who can really support the mission of their departments and agencies. For many of them, they can never rise to the level of deputy director unless they leave the classified ranks. Our history in the Government of Guam has been to make political appointments to the deputy positions and the director positions. These folks may have good backgrounds, may have good qualifications. These folks may have good backgrounds, may have good qualifications, but it is time, I believe, Mr. Chairman, for us to recognize the competency within the classified service of the government of Guam. We've done it in the Guam Police Department. The highest uniform position in the Guam Police Department is the colonel position. The colonel oftentimes asks, acts as the acting chief and in fact, is the equivalent of the deputy director of the Guam Police Department. The same nomenclature is at the Guam Fire Department. They do not have a deputy director at the Guam Fire Department. The highest ranking uniform fire officer serves as the deputy director, and that is a classified employee. Senator Ben Pangolinon has shared with you the experience of the Guam Department of Customs and Quarantine. The equivalent of the deputy director at the Department of Customs and Quarantine is the highest uniform person, serving in the equivalent of what we would call the colonel's position at the Guam Police Department and the equivalent of the deputy fire chief at the Guam Fire Department. Yes, this is a paradigm shift. Yes, I know some of us here may feel that it's too big a change at this time, but we have to begin planning for this. The bill that is before us focuses on this fiscal year. It doesn't present, except in very few instances, examples of how we hope to change the way our government operates to make it more efficient and accountable beyond this fiscal year. This amendment would help do that. So I ask my colleagues to give it attention and to please support it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're more than welcome, Senator Guthers. On the motion, clearly, there's been an objection expressed. I'm sorry. Didn't people get up and speak against it and say they weren't going to support the amendment? That's, I was watching. No, I wasn't going to say that. I said that there's clearly some objections, so all those in favor of the amendment by Senator Guthers, please signify by raising your hand. No, I don't have to say the name. I can only, I can say there's only three though, so we're well short, so that one doesn't make it. The next one, Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will continue to try in the future. Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next amendment would add a new section to Chapter 6 as follows. Travel restriction. Funds appropriated in this act shall not be used for off-island travel or per diem by government of Guam employees and officials, except for travel that is federally funded, travel that is stated, that is a stated requirement to administer or secure federal grant programs, travel by Imagilahi Guahan, Isogundo No Magilahi Guahan, and other officials to represent the people of Guam at meetings and functions deemed critical to the well-being of the people of Guam by Imagilahi Guahan, provided that the Director of Administration shall provide a monthly report to the Speaker of Imagilahi Guahan on such travel, I'm sorry, Speaker of Legisla- Speaker of, wait a minute, that is an error. But to the Magilahi Guahan on such travel expenses by the fifth day of each subsequent month thereafter. Travel for the purpose of promoting tourism on Guam, provided that such travel is paid for by the tourist attraction fund and shall be restricted to the general manager and professional staff of the Guam Visitors Bureau and such individuals required for promotional activities, excluding members of the Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors Bureau. Travel by law enforcement personnel providing escort services for criminal suspects, detainees, and convicted felons being returned to Guam for judicial proceedings or being transferred to off-island correctional facilities. Travel by medical personnel providing escort services for patients requiring off-island medical treatment and other escorts as specifically authorized by the Department of Public Health and Social Services pursuant to Guam law. Travel necessary for the enforcement of court orders and travel required under the Residential Treatment Fund. Mr. Chairman, I believe if we adopt this amendment, we will see a substantial savings between now and the end of the fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Senator Shimizu? I'm sorry, Senator Shimizu? And then Senator Pangolinon?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask the mover of the amendment on D, when it says excluding members of the Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors Bureau. I have been from time to time, the past 30 years, that there are times where the chairman of the board makes a, participates in this and is a major and a key player. Is it your intent to exclude the Board of Directors or even the chairman, no representation? Or do you see that their participation is, has no essential value to promoting tourism for Guam?
Ms. Chairman, I can yield-
Wait, 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 wait. Do you yield to the question?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, proceed Senator Guthers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would welcome an amendment if my colleague feels it would be helpful. My purpose in writing that provision, that particular provision of the amendment the way I did, was because of what has been perceived as abuse. The intent is to reduce the abuse that the Guam Visitors Bureau is a free-for-all for anyone who happens to be a member. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Senator Shimizu? Well-
I will welcome an amendment.
Senator Shimizu?
Yes, thank you very much. So if the, I guess my thinking of this is to, that we might be micromanaging the Board of Directors, the policymakers, you know, in terms of limiting that they cannot participate in promoting our island. I am looking at, unless we take a one-minute recess to rewrite this up, but let me just give you my general thought. And on D, travel for the purpose of promoting tourism on Guam, provided that such travel is paid for by the tourist attraction fund and shall be restricted to the general manager. You might say, a general manager or any designee of the board, at least some board participation-
No objection.
-be put in that area. I'm thinking out loud here so that at least they, there can be a, some flexibility on having a member of the board representing the board and use at least the chairman. So yeah, I would have to write the amendment, but I'm still laying that foundation. Shall be restricted to the general manager, comma, board members, a representative of the board.
Why don't we go ahead and take a 30-second recess so that you can jot this down?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. Ms. Chairman, I would like to withdraw my original amendment on travel restrictions-
Okay.
...and offer a substitute amendment.
Okay, there's no objection to withdraw? Okay, continue, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The substitute section reads as follow, follows. Add a new section to Chapter 6 as follows. Executive branch travel restrictions. The substitute amendment, Mr. Chairman, incorporates all of the input from my colleagues, so I'd like to move that it be acted on at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the Guthers Amendment, Senator Shimizu? Senator Shimizu?
We have so many papers in front of us and so we were looking at that subsection D and the amendment here, it puts back in the board members of the Guam Visitors Bureau. You incorporated that suggestion that we had, so that being incorporated, I would have no objection.
Okay, so there's no other speakers on the amendment? If there's no objection, amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, my-
You had another amendment, right?
Yes, my last amendment, Mr. Chairman, adds a new section to Chapter 6 as follows. Wireless communication restrictions. Notwithstanding any other provision of law and upon the effective date of this act, no government of Guam fund shall be expended for the purposes of cellular telephone, cellular telephone service, and other wireless telephone service. This section shall apply to the expenditure of any and all government of Guam funds, regardless of source and inclusive of all funds utilized by the autonomous agencies, except to the extent that government of Guam funds may be spent on wireless telephone service, provided that the government of Guam will be reimbursed by federal funds or other grants. This section shall not apply to Imagilahi Guahan, Isogundo No Magilahi Guahan, the Speaker of Legislation Guahan, the Chief Justice Supreme Court of Guam, the Presiding Judge of Superior Court of Guam, the crisis hotline program of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse for official use only, law enforcement officials, and on-call health professionals at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, and the Department of Public Health and Social Services. This section shall apply to the expenditure of any or all government of Guam funds, regardless of source and inclusive of all funds utilized by autonomous agencies. Ms. Chairman, I think the amendment speaks for itself. I understand a colleague does have a, would like to amend this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Guthers. On the Guthers Amendment, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. Chair allows, I would like to be able to make an amendment to this amendment. Okay, adding to the line that starts, this section shall not apply to Imagilahi Guahan and so on, to include in amongst those individuals that it shall not apply to, the village mayors and vice mayors, fire and EMS officials, and on-call emergency management personnel. And, Mr. Chair, just for advice information-
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You have, is that-
It was passed out already.
Oh, you have-
It's handwritten.
Your amendment to the amendment?
Yes, sir. It's handwritten.
Okay, let me just, give me one minute to find that amendment. Ooh, boy. Okay, okay, so there's been an amendment to the Guthers Amendment by Senator Blas. And again, it would be after this section not applied to, village mayors and vice mayors, fire and EMS officials, on-call emergency management personnel.
And that's to be included along with those, the other individuals that this section does not apply to.
Okay, if there's no objection to the amendment, to the amendment? Okay, amendment to the amendment carries. On the main amendment, Senator Shimizu?
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, you know, I wanted to find out what is the fiscal impact? I mean, just how much are we spending? Because you know, we are now within the 21st century. And when I first, when I first viewed Guam cellphone, I kind of viewed it as a luxury item. But today, as I look around, it appears to be an everyday necessity of life, you know? Now, I know the good author and of this amendment provided so many exclusions, I mean, that we have there, and they're probably appropriate because it's health, safety, you know, and yes, even welfare, when you have like child protective services, a lot of the social workers do go out. I know in the day when we used to go out, sometimes it gets really scary when we go into the community. So I'm just wondering, you know, just looking at, are we penny wise and, you know, in this regard, to be able to save the money? But I wonder how much we would save, you know, in terms of local funds? I wonder how much agencies have cellphones? I wonder how much of that is being abused when we come in to have legislation such as this, to have restrictions on wireless communication? And I asked that of my colleague, if I should yield to that answer in terms of, this restriction is due in part to the financial conditions of government? And how do we price some of the services to the people of Guam when, like I said, dealing with social workers that deal with child protective services out there, are dealing with crisis intervention and may also put themselves in harm's way? So if the good author would just kind of give me an idea, of course, the case, give us an idea of what it would cost, what is the cost savings for this restriction?
Would the author care to yield to the question?
Well, Ms. Chairman, I can address some of his questions. A specific amount I cannot provide. However, I can share with you, we just had a recent experience at the Guam Public School System. The school system apparently had misuse federal money and had a bill for the use of cellular phones and other devices to the tune of $150,000. We will probably have to repay all that money to the federal government. In addition, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of this amendment is not to control because of abuse. The purpose is to try to reduce costs between now and the fiscal year in those areas that we can temporarily do without. The emergency services of this government will not be impacted by this provision. But day-to-day users in the government who avail of these devices would certainly be impacted. The purpose is to ensure that our emergency services, our health services, and our law enforcement services continue to have the use of this equipment if it facilitates the protection of the community. But other uses that are not critical would not have the use of this material and equipment throughout the rest of the fiscal year. And this is primarily in order to bring about some financial savings of the government.
Thank you very much Senator Guthers. That answer your question, Senator Shimizu?
Yeah, I, I support wholeheartedly the cost containment. I want to make sure that, you know, the issues of health, you know, and public safety be not be compromised, should not be compromised. I have another question. The effective date of this act, it says, notwithstanding any other provisions law, and upon effective date of this act, is this upon enactment, it becomes effective? If we enact on it tonight or tomorrow? And I wanted to find out what will be the fiscal impact of those, I think we go into contracts, and I think there might be penalty provisions if you, what's that, end your contract before the, you know, and I wanted to ask again, what is the financial impact in terms of the cost that we may have?
If that, okay.
I want to ask that because it says effective this date, as soon as this enacted, then all those cellphones become closed up, but yet they still owe a contract. So I might want to suggest that we may want to look at verbiage whereby we do not get penalized for early, so I wanted to ask the good author of this-
You care to yield to another question there?
Real quickly, Ms. Chairman, I'm not really, I'm not really a lawyer, but I can say that contracts with the government of Guam are always subject to termination, so contracts are at the will of the government of Guam. I would hope that we would look at this as an opportunity, and I'm sure our departments and agencies, they've done this before, this is not the first time we've had a similar amendment like this. So, Ms. Chairman, I would like to proceed with the action.
I still have just a concern, the clarity, that I want to make sure that, that when you have the- that when you have the effective date of this act, you know... Mr. Chair, my suggestion is just to look at that and let's be sure. You know, later on, you don't want to come back and get bitten by this. I'm just giving my good colleague a cautionary note that you might want to look as to the effective date of this act. You know, it could be that effective act, effective date of this act here, but it's also contractual relationships that you do have in that legislation. I don't know if we have the authority to abrogate a contract that has been entered into. I'm making that caution. But other than that, if she's assured that there'll be no penalties assessed in this real tight period of time of money, I would yield to her. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I remember that the Guam Medical Examiner is, I think, equipped with a cellphone. And I wonder if that may be included as one of the official, government official in any part of this amendment? The Guam Medical Examiner?
No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Judy? That seems to conclude the discussion on this amendment. Is there any objection to the Guthers amendment? Okay, without objection, the amendment carries. Okay, that disposes of all of Senator Guthers amendments. We will now move on to... Now move on to Senator Pangolinan's amendment. Senator Pangolinan? The one having to do with H. Laddie? Halate or?
I'm still working on my amendment with the chairman, Mr. Chair.
Oh, on this, you're changing your amendment?
Yes, I'm still trying to-
Okay, so we'll just wait on that one. Senator Rory Raspicio?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I offer an amendment which I believe would help this legislature in the fiscal year 2008 budget process. And probably even if ever we have to come back and revisit the budget for the current fiscal year. This amendment, Mr. Chairman, would add a new section to this chapter. And it would amend subsection 3111, Oaths and Affirmations. It's very clear that this legislative body, yourself, a chairperson of a committee or their designee, and including the Sergeant-at-Arms or Sergeant, Assistant Sergeant-at-Arms, may administer oaths or affirmations to witnesses in any matter under examination in furtherance of a legislative proceeding, whether they be under subpoena or not. And I'd like to include the words, "Except that oaths shall be administered to all witnesses whenever fiscal matters are under examination at a legislative proceeding." And I'm asking that the legislature give this amendment its serious consideration. I'm not implying at all that anyone who has testified so far before the legislature have not been truthful. But it's apparent, Mr. Chairman, that we're trying to grapple with some of the testimonies, whether it comes from the administration or maybe even members of the community when they say something will happen to the best of their knowledge. And we go based on those assumptions. And then when the fiscal year is over, we see from the audits that some other scenario occurred. And I think, and I think what the people of Guam are looking for in this legislature is some kind of means or mechanisms to instill credibility in this current legislative process, Mr. Chairman. And this, I believe, had it were instituted or had the legislature adopted or approved of my constant request to have anyone testifying before the legislature, had those things be done, I certainly believe that we wouldn't have taken eight months to determine the Bill 74 before. So asking for support, it's not only going to make the process more expedient, it's going to add credibility to it. And it's going to make sure that what people say is really the true financial... It's reflected of the financial condition of the government. It's not just because they're advocating their position. I recall when you, along with the gentleman from Baragada, were debating whether or not individuals can come in here and advocate for certain positions on certain legislation. And you said, Mr. Speaker, that the individuals from the administration who come in here and advocate for their administration's position really raised a red flag in my own mind to let me conclude that if you really believe, or if we really believe that they're advocating their position, then certainly it may not be a situation that's in the best interest of the government of Guam in terms of financing. So please, Mr. Speaker, don't object to this amendment or anyone else. Please, Mr. Chairman, on finance and taxation-
That's an interesting statement, Senator Raspicio, considering I'm chairing, but-
But I'm speaking to the body through you, Mr. Speaker, and so I'm-
Then the proper thing was, Mr. Speaker, I hope the members of the-
Yeah, yeah, I know. And so I hope that members would adopt this amendment. And there'll be no objections. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, since Senator Raspicio asked, is there anybody who's objecting? I don't see anybody objecting, so without objection, the amendment carries. I know, I'm just looking. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have one amendment with respect to restriction on home use of government of Guam vehicles. We are in the process of looking at how to reduce the overall cost of our government. And in many cases, there are rules in place or should be in place. And there's supposed to be conformance to that. But I think the community is a small island. We all see what's going on. A number of vehicles are driven home at the end of the day. And in effect, you're actually adding to the cost of government. And in many cases, unless otherwise specifically allowed by the Director, these things are done on a regular basis. In effect, provide for personal transportation of government vehicles for government employees. And so this restriction on home use of government vehicles specifically says, "Except where expressly provided by 4 GCA 11103C, no government of Guam-owned, leased, or rented vehicles may be driven home by an employee unless such employee is on-call as an emergency first responder." And on the attachment, if you go back to what is basically the last page, you'll see that the provision of this section only shall not apply to any vehicle assigned to the governor, Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker, the Presiding Judge, and the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. So this, Mr. Chairman, is an opportunity for us as the gentle lady from Mingilao had indicated, for us to try to address some of the expenditures and reduce the overall cost, at least in some small way, as it pertains to fuel for vehicles. And of course, just I want to raise a point that on the last line of this amendment, it's for emergency first responders. So if you have someone at Crime Lab who has to respond, if you have the Chief Medical Examiner has to go to the scene of a homicide, he only can use his vehicle for those purposes and drive his vehicle home for those specific purposes. And if you have someone from Child Protective Services that responds, if you have someone from the Fire Department, there's a number of different areas where first responders respond to emergencies. And that is, my belief, what we should allow for in this amendment. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
It's really not necessary to exempt the Speaker from this. I don't, don't leave one, I don't care. But I won't get into it. On this motion, is there any discussion? Without discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Sorry? I'm looking to see if there are any more. Oh, yes, there is. Senator Luhon? There's only one that I have, Senator Luhon. It's Clearinghouse, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Miss, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this adds a new section to the miscellaneous provision. Mr. Chairman, this basically is an amendment to Section 1, Subsection T of Public Law 28150, Chapter 4, Part 1, as amended in Section 14 of this act, is repealed. The unexpendable balance of fiscal year 2007 appropriated to the Office of the Lieutenant Governor for the operation of the Guam State Clearinghouse is hereby deappropriated, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, there's been, actually, for going on seven weeks now, we've looked at areas that needed to be cut. We saw redundancy in service in regards to what BBMR and the Clearinghouse is supposed to do. We see the redundancy in service when we talk to the Director of BBMR. He says that he assured us that what the Clearinghouse is supposed to be doing, they've been doing. He's been there for over 20 years. That being said, Mr. Speaker, we need to seriously look at the operations and the redundancy in service and the cost savings to this government and, again, to the people of Guam. Again, inclusive as in this bill, Mr. Chairman, is fee increases for the people of Guam. And in a lot of cases, what's been presented to us was unjustified in the methodology in which these fees were brought about. Mr. Chairman, we have found, and as presented to us by the Director of BBMR, that they're already doing this. They're already doing what the Clearinghouse is supposed to do. And so for the rest of the appropriation, say that for the Clearinghouse is thereby deappropriate. And it's enough said, Mr. Chairman. There's a cost savings for the people of Guam. Again, we need to look at the areas that we can cut in which the service is being provided by another agency already being done. And that speaks for itself. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. You know, and I recognize that one of the reasons why we've been sitting in these halls for so many weeks is, you know, we're trying to not only balance the budget, but find ways to be able to be very innovative and creative and being able to get additional revenues into the government of Guam. And, Mr. Chair, unfortunately, I am not in support of this amendment for the mere fact that, you know, I recognize with regards to whether the intent of the Guam State Clearinghouse and what its functions are and what its potential is actually is. You know, the Clearinghouse can be utilized and should be utilized and is utilized to be able to find funding, additional funding outside of the government of Guam, and quite honestly, outside of the island of Guam, to be able to bring in so that we can continue to provide and get funding to provide the critical and essential services that we need to continue to provide. And so with that, you know, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, deappropriating it so that we can no longer have the State Clearinghouse gives us... It's going to stop a... An entity of the government of Guam whose main focus, whose main charge is to find more money, find more ways to be able to fund the services that we need. And I think that the amount of the funding that we've, that is appropriated for them already is miniscule compared to the amount of funding that this entity can bring into the government. So, Mr. Chair, I am not in support of this amendment, and I just needed to make that note. Thank you.
On the amendments? On the amendments, Senator Pangolinan, then Senator Shimizu, then Senator Palacios.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I want to commend the author of the amendment for continually scrutinizing, I guess, the budgets and seeing where we can have cuts. And also, of course, for following the discussions in terms of the roles of BBMR and the State Clearinghouse. I do want to articulate a little bit more of the concept behind the State Clearinghouse and differentiate that from the work done by BBMR, having authored the Guam State Clearinghouse legislation. And it's really, it really is a case of, has the baby started walking yet? I mean, the State Clearinghouse is in its infancy. And the idea was that, as articulated by the previous speaker, to seek ways to generate new federal funding for Guam through pursuing, pursuit, pursue of grants and other federal funding programs that will avail us of monies that do not currently come to the government of Guam. I was reading the Hawaii State... It wasn't their State Clearinghouse, but it was the Hawaii Office that tracked federal programs and federal funding in Hawaii. And Hawaii leads the nation in attracting federal dollars to the state of Hawaii that is available to run programs in the state and generate not only public service program enhancements, but also economic development grants. And believe it or not, the state of Hawaii leads the nation in receipt of those grants. And they do that because they have a coordinated effort towards finding these grants. And they have an office similar to the Guam State Clearinghouse, which pursues these grants, submits the application, works with the departments and the agencies in the packaging of grant applications and so forth. And that's the intent we have here. And the State Clearinghouse has not had a chance to even begin that process. If you recall, Mr. Chair,[1637.34] If you recall, Mr. Chair, the reason we have a Camacho Cruz administration and not a Camacho Moylan administration was the quabbling over the State Clearinghouse and the control of who runs that office. And had we not had that squabble, then I think the State Clearinghouse could have begun its work, and we could have seen some progress, or we could have seen that it doesn't work. And I believe that we haven't seen that it cannot work or does not work because of the fact that they've only had four months of, of opportunity, really, in this administration to try and pursue the original concept of the State Clearinghouse. So while I agree that we need to take a look at where we can cut, we may be cutting this one too early. And I think if we have an opportunity to look at it in the next budget cycle, take a look at what grants they've been able to generate over and above the regular formula grants that we get, because really, that's what it's supposed to do, enhance other grants that are not part of state formula grants, grants that you have to pursue, competitive grants and so forth, that bring in new money. And so I would like to give it a little bit more time to see the lieutenant governor, who now has the support of the governor, put this program in place and see whether it can work. And I think it may just be a little bit too early in cutting it out, and for that reason, you know, I would respectfully request the body, considering it, giving it at least the rest of this fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino, and Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I share the sentiments and remarks given by the two previous speakers, but I'd like to add that, you know, the immediate deappropriation of funding to the, to the office would, of course, result in immediate termination of about 18 people now, I think, being employed in the Clearinghouse. I guess we can actually review this, you know, in a more extended public hearing format so that, so that we can actually, you know, start it is more, for $300,000, $400,000, how much can we get? I, I share especially the observation of the retiring speaker with respect to giving it an opportunity to perhaps see what they can do, this new administration with this new arrangement. We heard the presentation of the staff from there that they are embarking into heightening compliance with federal funding requirements, I guess minimizing penalty as a result of noncompliance, you know, finding more things. So, again, I share the sentiments and observation with the last two speakers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can understand the, the mover of this amendment, you know, in terms of reducing the cost of government. I like to be able to say, though, that I like to look in terms of cost benefit and cost effectiveness. The, the Guam State Clearinghouse, as I mentioned even earlier, you know, these are not beans counters, they don't count the beans, they're, they're there to aggressively pursue additional revenues. And I, I like to be able to see that revenues enhancement, like I said earlier, in terms of the priorities, is something that we should nurture and, and nudge and, and expect those agencies that are producing or help to produce revenues to this, to the government so that we can get the services to the people of Guam, because government only exists for the people's benefit. So I, I like to, to echo that we watch very carefully and nurture very carefully the State Clearinghouse to be proactive towards increasing the amount of funds that it can get, because I honestly believe there is, you know, funds out there, but you need people to go out and hunt them down, track them down, and bring them in and bring it into the coffers of the government of Guam. So, I, I, I think this is one of those priorities in, that I've said, health, public safety, and education and revenue enhancement. And I, I hope that I am, I won't be disappointed in the Clearinghouse setting records and getting grants here. I know the, the, the young man, Mr. Villa Verdi, I know him to very, to be very motivated, very intelligent, and very hardworking, so I, I do like, like Senator Benn said, give them a chance. And I, I think we will see some, some growths in revenues that we so desperately need. But I do commend the Senator Jesse Lohan in, in challenging people to justify their existence. And I, I hope that the Guam State Clearinghouse will, you know, meet the challenge of Senator Lohan, that, you know, you must justify your existence and do what you, you're mandated to do and, and be successful and productive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Doesn't look like there's anybody else who wants to talk on this, so all those in favor, please, I know, several people objected, several people objected already, so all those in favor say aye. Raise your hand. I think the amendment is suffering from a deficit of support and fails as consequence. Senator Lohan, you have another amendment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is to add a new section. Actually, Mr. Chairman, this is a time-sensitive thing, that's why I added on to this, to this bill. This bill basically had a, a public hearing, if you remember, and it came out of your committee, Mr. Mr. Chairman. It's basically to the, to the merit, this merit awards. It's basically, Mr. Chairman, goes out to the Southern High and George Washington High School, who have adopted a quarter credit system. Students there can earn sufficient credits in graduating in less than four years, Mr. Mr. Chairman. As it reads right now, you have to have four full years to be able to qualify. However, some of these students are graduating in three years, meeting their grade point average and attendance requirements. However, because the law states that you have to have four years, it nullifies them from, from competing with their peers for this financial assistance. So, otherwise, I would have let it stand alone as a bill, because it already had a public hearing, but it's time-sensitive, they're going to be graduating here next month. And so I'm asking the body, Mr. Chairman, that if we can include it in there in order to, to get our, our students to, to be qualified and hopefully gain that merit system. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
On that motion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Senator Spalding, you have an amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Right now, we're, we're reworking a little bit of the wording on, on my amendment.
Okay, we'll just wait on that.
Thank you.
Senator Calvo. Your first amendment, having to do... Oh, is this different from what we have already? Is it passed out to everybody?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Ms. Cherry passed out the amendments. The amendment I'm proposing, the first one, is add a new section blank to the miscellaneous provisions, and it's titled Real Property Tax Amnesty. Again, this is in line with, with the revenue projections as put forth by, the new proposed revenue projections as put forth by the administration. And this would put it in line with the spending authority of the administration. The problem now is with the real property tax, it goes in, it does not go into the general fund, but it goes into special funds. And so what this would allow is for the appropriation from the special fund into the general fund.
On that, on that amendment, is there any objection? Objection, the amendment carries. Next.
Mr. Chair, the next one, it's, actually, there's two parts of it. It says adds a new section to the miscellaneous provision chapter, so I don't mind dividing it, because there, I don't know why they're all put together, but they were. The one says, the first part of it says, section blank, notification of responsibility, and then the second part says, section blank, streetlight fund. So I'll first make my first amendment on notification of responsibility. And again, this was recommend, the, the public auditor asked me if I could place this amendment into the budget law, and the reason being, of course, is that when it comes to notification, the second quarter is over, that notification should have happened in March. So to, to be consistent with her having the ability to notify responsible parties without having to go back in time, she requested this amendment.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. Second amendment?
Okay, thank you. The second amendment, sir, again, Mr. Chair, is, there has been some amendments made in the, in the budget, in the budget bill that allow for a percentage to be earmarked, again, going back for services that are, that are particular to the agency that collects the fees. And of course, I was in favor of that amendment. What this would do, but would, it would separate and delineate the streetlight fund from this particular provision here. Again, just for the very, mere fact is that we have been consistently underfunding the streetlight fund over many years, and it's the intention of this particular amendment to ensure that the, when it comes particular to the streetlight fund, that, that, that those, those fees are, those appropriation requirements are, are fully funded.
On that motion, objection sorted. There is objection? All right, Senator Shimizu. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This is the streetlight fund, right? I mean, I'm, again, having just come back into the service of this body, what is this better services fund?
That was just created in this session.
Just created just now in this session earlier that, well, at least it's not been enacted yet, right?
No.
It's just still an amendment. So the streetlight fund, didn't that come from the abandoned vehicle fund that, that services the streetlights?
Do you wish to answer that question?
I could check, I don't know.
I believe that the, the money is split between the abandoned vehicle fund and the streetlight fund. But it's not abandoned vehicle fund, it's all going to streetlights. Yeah. It's all streetlights now.
Okay, so we've, we've eliminated the abandoned vehicle fee?
I don't know that we eliminated the fund, but it's all captured and going to the streetlights.
It is separated, but it's going to come from the same funding source, and of that source that comes in, we're going to take 10% to put to the better service fund. And if I just may ask us to, you know, recollect my memory, what is the better service fund? What, what does it do?
Would you like to have the author of the better service fund amendment?
Just very quickly, not long, but...
Senator Pangolino, do you yield?
Yes, the better, better services fund is the, it was an amendment made to this bill that earmarked 10% of the fees collected at the Department of Revenue and Tax, including the fees that have been raised here, to go into their fund for computer upgrades, training, enhancement of their online tax filing and so forth. And this amendment by Senator Calvo says, one of the fees collected by RevTax is the streetlight fund fee from the vehicle registration. And this would say that on the streetlight fund, or on that vehicle registration, we go to the streetlight, we don't take 10% of that, we just leave it, the entire fee goes to streetlights, and that 10% is only from the other fees collected.
Okay, that, that was very clear. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I support this amendment, and one reason is, we have a problem with the streetlight funds, as you know, Public Works is owed millions of dollars, I'm sorry, GPA is owed millions of dollars by Public Works. We have to find a way to correct that problem because they have been turning lights off strategically around the island, and I do believe that this has created a public safety hazard in many, many parts of the island at night when you're driving, the streetlights are off. And we recently had a fatality, and it was reported that one of the contributing factors was the lack of proper lighting on the roadway. Pedestrian was hit and died. So I think this is a very good amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Guthrie. It's on the amendment, is there any objection? Objection, the amendment carries. Do you have one more, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, just the last one. Again, this was recommended by the administration. It, it's add a new section to blank to the miscellaneous provisions, and this is amend section 2 of Chapter 5 of Public Law 28-150. And the, the only change here is, again, scratching out Imagulain Guahan with the Director of Government of Guam Retirement Fund. And the reason being, again, is that the administration is not the, the entity that generates this information, it is a retirement fund. So, the intent of this, of this amendment, it would be to allow the, the agency and the head of that agency that is generating this information to be the provider of the report to the legislature.
On that amendment, any objection? Objection, the amendment carries. We're going to take a brief five, 10-minute recess so that we can, yeah, I saw it, but I'm having a hard time understanding it. So, I believe that Senator Spalding's working on one and Senator Pangolino. We'll take a brief five, 10-minute recess to get those last two, or those next two amendments.